Good evening, everyone. It's currently six o'clock. We'll go ahead and start the meeting. Before we start too, we have plenty of room upstairs. So please, for everyone's safety, if anyone is standing in the aisles or on the side, please find a chair. We want to make sure that we ensure safety as much as possible for every single person in this room. So if you can, if you're standing, please find a chair. There's plenty of space upstairs. Okay? Let's please take roll.
Commissioner Ly Day.
Here.
Commissioner Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Bray.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Kreiner. Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
And Chair Wang.
Here. Well now, we're going to start the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, if you can, please stand.
Ready? Begin.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, in the rightful with the routine of justice.
That was actually a very beautiful song right there. Appreciate everyone's participation. Out of respect for every single person, to please make sure you have your phone on silent or mute. I'm going to start the meeting by reading the procedures. This meeting is being conducted in person and electronically. The public may participate in tonight's meeting by using the Zoom link provided on the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that all virtual participants will be on mute until they are called upon by the chair, at which point they will be unmuted. If you are a member of the public and would like to comment on an item, use the raise hand function on Zoom. To avoid any confusion, please wait for the item you desire to comment on to be called by the chair before electronically raising your hand. For each matter considered by the commission, there will first be a staff presentation, followed by a presentation from the project advocate. Testimony from supporters of the project would then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The advocate will have the right to a final rebuttal presentation prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations governing length of public debate, all public testimony from those in support and opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three lights on the podium next to the microphone will indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins. The yellow light will come on with the soft bell ring when one minute is remaining. The speaker should be completing the testimony by the time the red light comes on with the final bell indicating time has expired. All in-person public testimony must be presented to the commission at the podium. Any testimony that references race, religion, ethnicity, economic status, national origin, or any other classification protected under state or federal law in a derogatory manner shall be deemed irrelevant and will not be considered by the commission in making this land use determinations. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised in oral or written testimony or before the close of the hearing. We'll start today's meeting by getting the approval for the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Chair Wang, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Israel Trejo with the Planning and Development Department. There are no changes to the agenda. Just do want to make a quick announcement. If anyone in the public would like to address the Planning Commission, we do have speaker cards both to my right here at the front, left-hand side as well as the table as we come in. So speaker cards if you'd like to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And then do we have any cards right now too?
Yes, we have cards here, left-hand side and the back.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, just one more reminder. Please do not stand or sit in front of an exit door. So if you are standing or sitting in front of an exit door, you do need to move. So as the appointed appointee of the fire marshal tonight, I will be reminding people of that if I see people blocking exits. Thank you.
Everyone, again, please, we have plenty of seats available upstairs too. So if you're standing, please, there's some seating upstairs, okay? Do we have any changes or any comments by the commissioners to the agenda or any motions?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
We have our first and the second. All in favor say aye. Polls say no. Motion passes. Next, under the consent calendar, we have regular meeting minutes for July 19, 2023. Do we have any motion by the commission to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
We have the first, and then the second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes. Do we have any reports by the commission? I see none. We'll go ahead and go to new matter. Before we start, I know that we have a lot of individuals in attendance tonight. So I want to be courteous of every single, every individual's time. I want to make sure that the process is as fair as possible, meaning that I want to make sure that anyone who wants to speak gets an opportunity to speak. We have rules that our Planning Commission have to follow, meaning that if this meeting goes on beyond 10 o'clock, we're going to have to vote to determine if we want to go ahead and prolong the meeting, or if we want to go ahead and continue the meeting to the next meeting. Okay? But I want to make sure that we are all respectful of one another. So if you do approach the podium and speak on this topic, please, please keep the conversation to the topic. Do not make any personal attacks on any single person or any single businesses. Don't, please don't address city staff. I want to make sure that any conversation is focused towards us and on facts too. Okay? Again, please be courteous of every single person in the room. And again, if your phone is on, please make sure you put that on silent or off. Before we start, we do, to ensure that every single person has an opportunity to speak, these cards that I'm currently holding right now are those individuals who would like to speak. So we have three different stacks in here, okay? Usually what we do is we give three minutes to every single person to speak, okay? So if you do the math, you have, you know, 80 individuals who would like to speak, three minutes per person, we're going to be here for a very long time. Okay? So to be courteous of every single person, what I want to do is I want to make a motion to go ahead and shorten the public speaking to, instead of three minutes, two minutes. Okay? So that way every single person gets an opportunity to speak. So I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Sorry ma'am, there's no public comments right now. Okay?
Can the two applicants, the two people that put the appeal, can they have three minutes?
Can you go ahead and approach the podium? So that way...
Yes, can the two people that made the appeal, can they have three minutes?
We're going to keep everything to two minutes. To two minutes, please. Okay?
Just the two people that made the appeal. I mean, that's why we're here.
My apologies, but if you look in the room, there's a lot of individuals who would like to speak. So I want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak to. Okay? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to go ahead and just have a staff presentation. This is for item ID 231219. And before we start, please, we have, we still have individuals standing. I want to make sure that we're trying to be as safe as possible. There's plenty of room upstairs too. So if you can, find a seat. Thank you very much.
Okay. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rob Holt with the Planning and Development Department, supervising planner, and here, we are, staff is considering conditionally used permit application number P23-00801 and its appeal, along with the related environmental findings.
Our apologies, we're having some technical difficulties, so please give us a couple of minutes.
Jose, it shows on my end that you have sharing capabilities.
Yes, I got it, sure. It should be, um, window.
Should open up the portal first?
Yeah, the portal is open.
Yeah, no. Trigger.
Um, yeah, open it up and then, yeah, so, um, present it.
That's right.
Um, press slide show. And then from beginning. Okay, now go back, now, go to, uh, pressure screen. And then go to the window. Yeah, and right there, yeah, yeah.
This one.
Can staff continue? Thank you. Okay. Before we get into the CUP and the appeal, just want to briefly go over the cannabis, commercial cannabis business permit process. And tonight, we have Jennifer Ruiz with the Office of Cannabis Oversight for any further questions later tonight regarding this specific process. All commercial cannabis business permits, both retail and non-retail, are required to obtain a commercial cannabis business permit, or otherwise known as a CCB, through the Office of Cannabis Oversight. Obtaining the CCB requires multiple phases that lead to a preliminary approval of the CCB. Phase one is the determination of eligibility, which is the applicant submitting a complete application consisting of seven different components, which could be a business plan, a social policy plan, a security plan, et cetera, along with other similar requirements such as demographics of the company, background checks, et cetera. Phase two would be the criteria evaluation ranking, which is an evaluation of the complete application submitted in phase one and scoring them based on an established scoring procedure, ranking them based on those scoring results. Phase three are interviews and second ranking, which are interviews of those that were top-five ranked from the scoring in phase two for each council district and then given a phase-three score which was combined with the phase-two score for a final score, of which phase four would be the city manager's final determination, which is a review of the businesses with the top-final scores along with other factors such as distance from each other's top business, from each other within their district, because of the eight-hundred-foot requirements required from each retail commercial cannabis business. Then, at that point, once they are selected, they're issued a preliminary approval of a CCB by the city manager's office. Following that is an appeals process which allows the council members to appeal any of the selected commercial cannabis businesses that received a preliminary approval. Once that is complete, the applicant for that business is free to move forward with an application for a conditional use permit for cannabis retail. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Blackstone and Pinedale Avenue. It is surrounded by various commercial uses to the east, various commercial and auto repair uses to the south, single-family residential neighborhood to the west and southwest, and various commercial shopping centers and uses to the north. Here you can see the planland use map with quarter center mixed use to the east-south, single-family medium density to the west, and commercial regional to the north. The subject business, the cannabis retail business proposed, is proposing to locate within a one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight-square-foot existing commercial tenant suite. Their hours of operation proposed are six AM to ten PM, seven days per week. That is consistent with our FMC code for hours of operation for cannabis retail businesses. And they are proposing two armed guards, armed security guards onsite during the operating hours. And they are providing, they have provided an odor technology plan that proposes to mitigate any potential odor issues that may occur and/or complaints that occur as well. The CUP approval process for cannabis retailers is three per district. Here I'm showing District Two, and currently shown by the yellow stars are three currently approved CUPs. One at seven-eight-three-five North Palm Avenue, which is currently in operation. One at seventeen-eighty-four West Shaw, which is not in operation. And this is one that is proposed to be relocated to the proposed seven-three-six-three North Blackstone Avenue. And six-nine-two-six North Weber, also not in operation. If tonight's item were to be approved at any point, then the, one of the three would be, one of the three CUPs already approved would need to be extinguished. And it would be proposed that the seventeen-eighty-four would be, because that's the relocation project. The applicant did provide a neighborhood responsibility plan, which provided a form to a, they proposed to form a community advisory board and a good neighbor policy. They have a complaint management plan to increase response time to concerns of noise, light, odors, and excess traffic, and to implement measures that mitigate excessive noise, provide adequate lighting, litter control methods, and mitigation of vehicle and pedestrian traffic, as identified in detail within the staff report provided to you. And the purpose for the neighborhood responsibility plan is to show that the business and its operating characteristics are not detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, or welfare of persons residing, working, visiting, or recreating in the surrounding neighborhood and will not result in the creation of a nuisance. The Council District Two Project Review Committee, this project went to this committee on May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The results of that meeting were to be continued to the June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three District Two Committee meeting, which allowed the applicant to hold a neighborhood meeting with the community. That neighborhood meeting was held on June seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Considered a voluntary meeting, not to be confused with neighborhood meetings required by code. The location was at Hyatt Park Place at seventy-three thirty-three North Fresno Street from seven to nine PM. The applicant provides staff with the meeting summary, of which explained thirty-eight attendees expressed support and seven expressed opposition. Those in support expressed their support on increased security, access to legal cannabis, appreciation for investment and interest in local jobs. Those in opposition expressed concern on increased vagrancy, encouragement of youth drug use, presence of armed security, additional harm to the area, and lack of input from Clovis Unified School District. Going to the project review committee that was continued to on June twelfth, at least twelve of those spoke in opposition and five in support of the project. Ultimately, the committee recommended approval of the project, two votes to zero. Prior to approval of the project and as required through the CUP process, this was noticed for a neighborhood notice within a thousand feet of the subject property to all property owners, which was mailed on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, providing a ten-day comment period that ended on June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Staff received numerous written communications, both in support and in opposition of the project. And there were four requests for notice of action received from that neighborhood notice. When the notice of action was posted, those that were sent the notice of action from the four requested, two did appeal that was posted on July eighteenth, and the appeal period ended on August second. Those appeals, both of them, received on July twenty-fourth within that, the appeal period. Which leads us to the appeal. The first letter had two issues, the first of which was that the cannabis retail business will create an unsafe environment for our community. The location is next to a residential neighborhood with no barrier. The Fresno Police Department requires dispensaries to have armed guards, which puts the community at great risk because of potential robberies. Dispensaries should be located away from residential uses, which the closest nearby would be the residence less than a hundred-and-seventy-two feet away to the west of the subject property, and located in business park or industrial areas. Staff's response to the appeal is that the security plan provided by the applicant specifies that the business will staff a minimum of two armed uniformed security guards during operating hours. Any persons entering the premises are required to be verified by security. Surveillance video equipment will be installed throughout the property. The applicant is required to comply with the police department conditions. In terms of location restrictions for cannabis retail businesses pursuant to Fresno Municipal Code Sections nine-thirty-three-oh-nine and fifteen-twenty-seven-thirty-nine-B, does not include residential uses or properties as a restriction. The second issue provided in the first appeal letter was that there is not adequate parking and will impact families, especially those who use the laundromat. The parking lot is currently always full. The property currently has thirty existing parking spaces serving all uses on the property and within the CMX Zone District. Parking requirements for all non-residential uses in the CMX Zone District is at one space, parking space, per six-hundred square feet of gross floor area. Based on those existing business types and their tenant suite areas, and including the establishment of the proposed cannabis retail business, the minimum parking space requirement is thirteen spaces, with thirty that would exceed the minimum requirement. And furthermore, the property abuts North Blackstone Avenue, which is designed as a bus rapid transit BRT route, providing public transit service every fifteen minutes or less at peak hours. The second letter, first issue of the second letter, of which there were two, was that the Pinedale Elementary School is one-half mile from the proposed dispensary. Although it is a thousand feet away, which is two-hundred feet more than the maximum eight-hundred-foot buffer requirement for public schools, that should still be considered. Staff's response is that the closest school to the subject property is Pinedale Elementary, at approximately one-thousand-and-forty feet away, where eight-hundred feet is the maximum distance requirement pursuant to, again, FMC Sections nine-thirty-three-oh-nine and fifteen-twenty-seven-thirty-nine-B. The subject property is located at the northernmost point of surrounding neighborhoods along North Blackstone Avenue with River Park, Universal Park, and Vela Gio Shopping Centers adjacent to the north. That said, staff did want to provide at least an image of what the distance looks like with street layout for the subject business location, which is highlighted in the yellow all the way at the top, and Pinedale Elementary at the south end. And that would be approximately a thousand-and-forty feet from building the property line. The final issue provided within that second appeal letter was that the applicant anticipates three-hundred vehicles per day. Why was a full traffic study not completed? Staff's response is that a traffic trip generation analysis was required as part of the application submittal pursuant to mitigation measure four-seventeen-dash-two of the cannabis EIR. The Department of Public Works determined that a traffic trip generation analysis is sufficient to comply with the aforementioned mitigation measure, and their review of the analysis did not result in any significant impact or infrastructure requirements. Any additional questions tonight based on this specific item? We do have Harmon and Public Works to be able to provide answers to that in further detail. So based on tonight's presentation and the information provided in the staff report and staff's findings, it is staff's recommendation to uphold the director's decision to approve this cannabis CUP and deny the appeal. It does need to be noted that a cannabis CUP decision can be invalidated if the ultimate decision is not supported by the adopted findings or if the adopted findings are not supported by substantial evidence. Staff's recommendation for approval is supported by findings already stated in Exhibit E of the staff report. If a planning commissioner makes a motion that differs from staff's recommendation, the motion shall include a statement about which required finding or findings cannot be made supported by evidence in the record. That completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission? Question, did the applicant have another site that they previously pursued?
Another site?
Yeah, another site.
I'd like to defer that to the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, there is a cannabis CUP that they had approved, currently have approved, at seventeen-eighty-four West Shaw Avenue, which is in District Two. That would need to be extinguished for this one to move forward.
Perfect. And then for the record, please note that Commissioner Kreiner is in attendance. Commissioner Kreiner, you have a question?
Thank you, Chair. One more time, you said upon the, if there is a denial, what are the stipulations one more time?
Sure, yeah, let me just read it. So if a planning commissioner makes a motion that differs from staff's recommendation, the motion shall include a statement about which required finding or findings cannot be made supported by evidence in the record.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Let's please have the applicant approach the podium, state your name, address. Also, again, everyone, please be courteous of one another. When someone is speaking, let's please be respectful. I understand that there's going to be individuals who are going to speak afterwards. Please, if you guys can, don't cheer, no booing, okay? Let's be respectful of one another. Like someone great told me before, silence is God's language, okay? So.
I just wanted to introduce myself, Dustin Moore. I'm here with the applicant as well.
I'm Lauren Carpenter, I'm the applicant. At seven-three-six-three North Blackstone Avenue. Good evening, Chair Wang, Vice Chair Hardy, planning commissioners and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present our project this evening. First and foremost, I want to thank the city for its nearly five-year process culminating in the issuance of our conditional use permit at this location. This is a testament to the work our team has undertaken to develop a thoughtful proposal that reflects significant outreach and engagement in Pinedale, across District Two, and throughout the city of Fresno. Importantly, I'm going to focus this evening on the facts as it relates to our project and briefly touch on points from within the four walls of the affiliated appeals. By way of background, I'd like to provide a high-level overview of how we arrived here. Embark was selected in the city of Fresno's rigorous merit-based process to operate in District Two and has since been issued a conditional use permit at this location. Our proposal was vetted by the state's preeminent cannabis consulting firm responsible for implementing cannabis policies throughout California, a committee of senior staff from the city manager's office, sorry, and more than two dozen city departments and county agencies. It is the culmination of their collective review that has resulted in a mark being awarded a CUP at seven-three-six-three North Blackstone Avenue. We stand before you today with a staff recommendation to deny the appeals and allow our project to continue moving forward, given the work that has been done to date and our full compliance with all laws and regulations governing this project. Importantly, Embark has engaged in significant outreach in Pinedale and across the city with both supporters and those in opposition. We spoke with the appellant during the notice community meeting we hosted in June, where support outweighed opposition by approximately five to one. We also met together at City Hall in a meeting attended by city staff just yesterday. I'm proud to report that Embark has garnered a widespread base of support, including from the Pinedale Community Association, a testament to the impact of this ongoing outreach and engagement. Well, not technically part of the discussion this evening, I should probably introduce myself because I jumped right in. My name is Lauren Carpenter, and I'm the founder and CEO of Embark. When you say embark, candidly, you're looking at her. This business was founded at my dining room table just a few short years ago, and it's grown to be something I'm very proud of in the years since. Embark is a locally and state-licensed cannabis retailer that operates under the strictest regulations of any business type in the city. We are overseen by the Department of Cannabis Control, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, local regulatory agencies, and the police department, among many others. It is important to note that regulatory authorities fully audit our businesses annually to ensure compliance with all licensing requirements and commitments made. My husband and I both grew up in the Central Valley, and we are proud of the company we've built here. We currently operate in eight California communities, including with an existing storefront elsewhere on Blackstone in Fresno. Our stores are fully unionized with United Food and Commercial Workers Union, ensuring we are providing good union jobs in the communities we serve. Our existing local operation in Fresno generates millions of dollars in annual tax revenues and hundreds of thousands of dollars in voluntary community benefits funding annually, deepening our local partnership. Our team is also one of the best in the business. We bring more than a decade of cannabis regulatory experience, coupled with profound leadership in traditional retail and from within the cannabis industry. It is this collective team that ensures we are a best-in-class operator in Fresno and beyond. Ultimately, though, we are more than just a cannabis operator. We are a partner to the communities we serve. Embark was selected to operate in the city of Fresno via a hyper-competitive merit-based process that vetted more than one-hundred potential operators. Since that time, Embark is one of only two operators to have opened our doors locally, despite a total of twenty-one permits being issued. This is a testament to our commitment here. Over fifty percent of our employees identify as coming from disadvantaged communities, and approximately half of our sales are of brands owned by women, people of color, members of the LGBTQIA+ community, veterans, and other underrepresented groups, ensuring our operations maximize benefits. As an example, our top-selling product here is grown in Fresno County. Our existing operations generated, as I've sort of stated, generated more than three million dollars in local, state, and federal tax revenues and six figures of community reinvestment last year alone. These funds address pressing community needs, from food instability to youth education and drug prevention. These are the types of business benefits that legal cannabis businesses provide. Embark has been awarded a CUP to operate at seven-three-six-three North Blackstone Avenue. Our location is a currently vacant retail suite formerly occupied by a check-cashing business. It is our intention to upgrade this location into a thriving retail store as part of the city's broader efforts to enhance the Blackstone corridor. Our location was vetted by our head of security to ensure that our security plan, operational procedures, and security infrastructure will not only enhance our location, but also serve as a benefit to the neighboring businesses and surrounding community. We've developed a functional floor plan and layout that is designed to complement our existing full-service retail model on Blackstone with a business model that is focused on BOPIS, or buy online and pick up in store. This is directly responsive to consumer preferences locally, which will reduce total transaction times by approximately eighty percent. Finally, and as I noted, this proposal represents the introduction of our retail business within an existing retail shopping center within a broader retail. an existing retail shopping center within a broader retail corridor, a clearly compatible To echo the staff report, our location is fully compliant per the city's ordinance and code. The project meets all Fresno municipal code setback standards for neighboring uses. Specifically, the city of Fresno increased the sensitive use buffer from the state mandate of 600 feet to a local mandate of 800 feet from any property line containing a sensitive use. The nearest sensitive use to our location is over 1,000 feet away, in excess of local and state regulations by 20% and 40%, respectively. Put more simply, we are fully compliant with all requirements relative to our location and are well outside of the buffer zone to sensitive uses, including the school, by 20% and 40%. We identified a location that has sufficient parking and thoughtful site layout to allow for regular flow of traffic at all businesses nearby without impacting the neighborhood. In addition, we have studied vehicular turning movements in relation to traffic flow, proximity in relationship to intersections, adequacy of site distances, location, and access. We engaged T Care Transportation Planning and Management Incorporated to conduct a traffic study as part of our application. The study assessed trip generation rates for the project based on the existing use. The study determined that, quote, "the existing parking supply is adequate for at least 10,500 square feet of retail, restaurant, or adult businesses," which is well in excess by approximately 20% of the footprint today. This means that an independent expert has analyzed the parking at this location using proven methodologies to determine the adequacy of parking at the site and has found that it exceeds standards. Please note this plan has also been reviewed and vetted by the Fresno Public Works Department, which is responsible for such assessment citywide. Finally, and was detailed in our application, in the event a community member is concerned with vehicular traffic, our onsite general manager will immediately investigate the situation and develop an action plan to ensure the business is being responsive to community sentiment and logistical needs, using our proven response protocols in practice in our existing operations today. This project will add 24/7 security and surveillance measures to the area, which has been widely celebrated in our conversations with nearby businesses and residents. These features include onsite patrolling security guards, which are armed per the Fresno municipal code, and off-site direct feed live monitoring for nearly 50 onsite security cameras. Importantly, this robust security infrastructure will include proactive measures to aggress vagrancy, loitering, littering, and other issues that currently plague the shopping center. In our door-to-door canvassing in the Pinedale community, this was the single greatest factor driving folks' support of our project. There are these issues in this shopping center today, and the community has expressed a broad base of support for our partnership in meaningfully addressing them. Our proposal also contemplates repairs and improvements to both the interior and the exterior, including the addition of lighting, landscaping, and more to beautify the center. This is how we play our small part in the city's broader effort to invest in the Blackstone corridor, something we are passionate about, given our other location is also on Blackstone. Finally, our proposal includes a voluntary good neighbor policy to address a variety of considerations, from parking and loitering to community outreach and engagement. Key features of the policy are a voluntary street team for regular beautification within the neighborhood, opportunities for partnership with surrounding businesses, and the distribution of 24/7 contact information for store leadership to ensure accessibility at all times. We create community advisory boards in every community where we operate to empower local residents with a seat at the table in ensuring transparent operations. It is this local group that will ultimately ensure our community benefits funding and volunteerism are targeted to the most pressing community needs. Embark has an existing community advisory board for its existing operations elsewhere on Blackstone that has directed significant community funding to local organizations, identified a number of volunteerism opportunities we have satisfied, and been a direct feedback loop to inform our operations. We will take that same approach here. While I'm taking us a bit outside the scope of our presentation today, I did want to briefly touch on our community benefits plan because it is so impactful in the communities we serve. Embark voluntarily allocates 1% of gross receipts to the local community for the lifetime of the business, which is directly reinvested back into the community to fund vital local priorities. This funding has provided warm rooms in the winter for the unhoused population, funded youth drug education and prevention curriculums with local youth nonprofits, addressed food insecurity, built parks and playgrounds, and so much more. Our community advisory boards include dozens of community leaders across California, from pastors and parents to nonprofit and educational leaders. These folks are not necessarily supportive of cannabis in their communities, but they do come together to work collaboratively with us to ensure that we are integrating our business sensitively in the communities they call home. We have said before, and I will reiterate again, we are happy to include those who are opposed to our project on this board to provide them direct insights into our operations. While this has been historically turned down when offered, I emphasize this simply to illustrate we remain committed to respectful dialogue and transparency for the lifetime of the business. I want to take a moment to briefly highlight the scope and extent of our outreach over multiple years in arriving at this point. Our team is engaged in literally thousands of conversations and meetings at this point with community members representing diverse perspectives at every level, from residents to local business owners to nonprofit organizations to the school district. We've engaged in one-on-one conversations with hundreds of Pinedale community members specific to this project to review the business, answer questions, and earn support. We hosted a Notice public meeting to two times the city's noticing requirement, a summary of which was provided to you from the city today, and where I provided my cellphone number to all of those in attendance. We've engaged in months of door-to-door canvassing within Pinedale to answer questions about the project at multiple points in this process to ensure direct engagement, and hosted a barbecue as recently as yesterday to continue that steady drumbeat of communication.
Let's please be respectful. Please, please keep all your comments to yourself, please.
I also met with the two appellants at our community meeting in June and at a meeting attended by city staff yesterday. During that meeting, one appellant affirmed that she has historically declined our meeting requests because of belief that there is nothing we can do to change her mind. Ultimately, we have garnered more than 1,000 letters of support for this project from our immediate neighbors, the Pinedale community, from across District Two and across the city. Devon on our team has personally knocked on hundreds of doors to introduce herself and has been met with overwhelming support in these conversations, given the security and ancillary benefits this business will provide. But don't just take my word for it. Here's a map highlighting where our support has been earned. This is the result of direct conversations with our neighbors. I want to take a moment to obviously illustrate that call-out boxes to within Pinedale, and the green dot is our proposed location, the orange dots are businesses, blue dots are residents. Thank you. I want to take one more moment to speak to our engagement efforts in Pinedale because they have been exhaustive. This effort has been led by Devon Wardlow, who leads Public Affairs for Embark. Devon is a planning commissioner in her community, and as such uniquely understands the importance of community outreach when weighing these decisions. Under Devon's leadership, team members, volunteers, and community members have spent weeks and weeks going door-to-door. I will let her speak to her experience later this evening, but want to unequivocally state that she was met with significant support in these direct and one-on-one conversations. While not all are supportive of cannabis, many see the opportunity this type of development represents in providing additional security, accountability, and neighborhood benefit. Many of these neighbors express concern about speaking publicly in favor of our project tonight, given the intensity of project opponents. As such, we've asked a healthy handful to stand with us tonight, but asked not all of them to speak to ensure we aren't here until midnight engaged in public comment back and forth. Instead, they have shared their support loudly in letters, by accompanying us in neighborhood canvassing, by welcoming our team members into their homes and their businesses, by hosting our neighborhood barbecue, by formally endorsing our project, and in their continued calls, text messages, and words of encouragement over many months in seeing this project come to fruition. I want to thank them sincerely for their trust and support. I also want to take a step back and contextualize this process. Voters legalized adult-use cannabis in 2016, creating a pathway for local governments to develop municipal policies to allow for licensed dispensaries. In 2018, Fresno voters passed a cannabis tax by a nearly 75% vote. Later that year, and in response to this widespread support, the city of Fresno adopted an ordinance to set up the permitting framework and regulatory requirements for cannabis businesses. As part of that process, the city developed its zoning requirements regarding permissible zoning for commercial cannabis activities. Discussions of the appropriateness of location should have occurred at that time. In March of 2020, and in anticipation of a process for local operations, Embark initiated a community listening tour, which has served as the foundation of our efforts ever since. In October of 2020, the city released a detailed application procedure, ensuring all businesses would be fully vetted across half a dozen critical components, including security, business plans, and community benefits. In December of that year, we submitted our application and began an intensive review process, ultimately resulting in our award in September of 2021. We opened the first of our two permitted locations in July of last year, and today are still one of only two operational storefronts citywide. As previously detailed, we continued community outreach and engagement throughout this process and hosted a community meeting in June of this year specific to this project. Tonight is the final hurdle before we are able to initiate construction and open later this year. I'll now briefly touch on steps one and two highlighted on the last slide. During step one, our business plan, safety plan, security plan, social enterprise and social policy and local enterprise plan, and neighborhood compatibility plan were evaluated by an independent third-party evaluator who has been responsible for administering commercial cannabis implementation for cities and counties across California, and a committee of senior staff from the city manager's office who conducted an oral board for each finalist and who ultimately made the final determination based on the above factors. Our scores in that oral board ranged from between 92 and 95% per criteria, resulting in our ultimate selection. During step two, Embark submitted a CUP application that underwent exhaustive review by 26 city departments and county agencies. This review was to ensure compliance with all applicable laws and regulations as it pertains to our project. This CUP was approved and then subsequently appealed by two affiliated individuals who have organized an opposition group. As previously stated, we have engaged with and will happily continue to engage with that group for the lifetime of this business. They have appealed findings A, C, and D of the notice of action. Specific to finding A, traffic and parking considerations were evaluated by the Fresno Public Works Department and found to be in compliance with applicable standards. Embark also retained a third-party expert and traffic engineer who found that, quote, "the project is compliant with the city's parking regulations." Per this review, the project is in full compliance with all applicable standards in Fresno municipal code, and there is no factual basis for an appeal. As it relates to claims C and D, I must reemphasize that armed guards are a requirement of Fresno municipal code and a component of the conditions governing our operations from the Police Department. We prefer unarmed guards, but that is simply not up to us. That said, no firearms have ever been discharged at any of our locations. I also want to address the notion that our security and safety plan received a failing score of 43%. As you can see, we scored well above that, at a 92.33% on the safety plan and 94.67% on the security plan, which is in the top-scoring bracket for all applications received for a dispensary in the city of Fresno. But really, the city undertook a process that assessed the legitimacy of what we submitted and found it to be a top applicant, such that we were authorized to move forward. That process included review from the Police Department specific to these factors. Ultimately, I understand that fear is a powerful motivator, but it is critical to note that the city manager's office, a preeminent third-party consultant, and the Fresno Police Department reviewed our security plans in exhaustive detail and approved them as a condition of our operations. As such, and again, there is no factual basis for an appeal. I have tried to delicately and sensitively respond within the four corners of the appeal, which challenged findings that have been objectively measured through exhaustive review by more than two dozen departments. I want to reemphasize that we will maintain an open-door policy for those in support and in opposition to our business, and will continue to work to earn the support of as many residents as possible over the lifetime of our operations. I, alongside other team members, have provided our cellphone numbers during Embark's community meeting on dispersed materials and has been used to communicate with the appellants. I remain open to continued dialogue for the lifetime of the business and believe strongly that the opponents can serve as partners in holding our business accountable. I am proud of the hundreds of Pinedale residents, more than 1,000 residents, nearly all of the surrounding businesses to our location, the Pinedale Community Association, the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, the Fresno Chamber of Commerce, Vision View, Sí Se Puede, the Central Valley Yemen Society, the Fresno Democratic Party Central Committee, the dozens of United Food and Commercial Worker Union employees that earn a living wage at their career with us, and the tens of thousands of local patients and customers who enjoy access to our facility that stand in support of Embark. I am also proud of the very significant benefits our current operations have provided this community and what this second business will also bring. I apologize that this has been a little lengthy in my presentation, but as I'm sure you can imagine, I am very, very proud of our team and of what we are building. Our Fresno team members are shining examples of what it looks like to act responsibly and compassionately in serving the Fresno community. As a young female founder in particular, it is important to me that I am setting an example, not just for our team, but for our industry, on how responsible cannabis can operate in communities. It is imperative to me that you see that we've gone above and beyond in every way imaginable as a testament to our desire to act as a true partner to this city and to this community. And it is a result and a testament to the work we have done that we have earned this conditional use permit. Thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. First question, I have a question in regards to, was there a previous site identified for this project, or?
There was, 1784 West Shaw.
Okay. What happened with that site?
So the current occupant was supposed to conclude their business operations, but that just did not occur. There were some development challenges for a neighboring site that they were moving into, and there is no defined exit, you know, for that business. And we just look forward to driving revenue to the city. We want to operationalize this business. I think it was the intention of the administration, et cetera, to administer this program and to get the businesses operational. We felt that it was our promise to the city that we would operationalize this business as soon as possible, and it could be years before we would even be able to take over that site.
Okay. And then how many jobs are you looking to create with this specific site?
So at our existing location, we've created about 60 jobs. We think for this site, we'll start with about 20. We estimated, you know, lower at the other site, and, you know, it can increase, but we will be doing direct outreach to residents of 93650 first to offer jobs and do recruitment from the Pinedale neighborhood. Our goal is to provide not a job, but a long-term career pathway as a union employer and to pay a living wage. I mean, that's what we've done across our entire platform and something we're very proud of.
And also due to current restrictions in regards to banking or anything that's involved, how does your business handle the transactions? Is it cash? Is it going to be through, are you guys allowed to actually use a financial institution?
It's something we're really, really proud of. We're one of the few, you know, we're one of the few operators that has full banking. We accept all electronic payments. We accept credit cards. In fact, only about 40% of our transactions are in cash, and we have weekly cash pickups with an armored car service that go directly to an NCUA-accredited institution. So we're fully banked.
Do we have any questions from the commission?
I have a question. In regards to parking, can you give us an example of your action plan and your response protocol?
Yeah, so an example I can give from another community is we found that there were approximately two hours during the day where it was really peak transaction times, and four hours immediately prior to those that there were not. So we've developed a program through our Passport Club, which is essentially our loyalty club, where we incentivize customers to come during those non-peak hours with a, you know, 5% discount or the like, and that fundamentally changed our traffic patterns in a favorable way.
And I would like to just emphasize that in the eight operational stores we have today, we've had zero issues from neighbors or anyone as it relates to parking at any of our stores. So I just wanted to underscore that as well.
Okay. And in terms of this parking stall, or parking spot, do you know more or less when there's more activity there? Do you have that information yet, or do you plan to get that?
So we conducted a trip generation study, and that also analyzed parking, and we actually have 20% more capacity for parking than is required by the Fresno City Code.
I think you were asking what times do we anticipate? Okay. So every location is different, you know, and candidly can be very different in terms of the prevailing hours, and so I think that's why we take a hyper-local approach that really brings our retail leadership team from the store into that action plan development, because what works in one community, you know...
you know, is not necessarily reflective of the peak volume times of another.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quiner.
So my question is, what is those peak hours at those other locations?
So again, it depends. We have communities where between eight and ten AM are very popular. We have communities where eleven AM to noon is popular. We have communities where it is seven to, you know, nine PM is popular. So it is very location-specific because your customers are typically coming from, you know, relatively immediate vicinity of your proposed location.
The reason why I ask the question is because I'm concerned, if any, around the peak hours at this location would conflict the hours of schools letting out.
We don't typically see that as an issue. Our stores open, the earliest a store, one of our stores opens is eight AM, so it's not typically at a time when youth are-
When school starts?
But students are in school at eight AM.
Or going.
Typically.
So typically, what we see as far as peak hours just from a general perspective is people before they go to work or after they get off work. Those hours during the day where there would be, you know, I think, any concern surrounding, you know, children walking by, you know, that, those time periods would not be in conflict. I think the other thing to note in a lot of the outreach we've done and the feedback we've received from the community is that many of the folks don't feel safe actually frequenting that shopping center right now, given the current, you know, vagrancy issues. So, you know, we're actually very proud to provide a security overlay that will ensure that that does not occur. We're responsible for that entire parking lot. And then, you know, second to that, you know, as we look at that enhanced security presence, we often see, and studies can prove, that, you know, crime in the surrounding neighborhood does decrease.
Okay. Once again, my, the concern I'm having is the other businesses with those peak hours. If you can maybe just do a little bit of studying on that. I don't know what other businesses are there. If there's a Little Caesars or something, I don't know why I heard about that. But whenever there's children that potentially could be getting out of school, frequencing those businesses that are next to it is a concern of mine. If those peak hours conflict, either kids coming out of school, lunchtime, or things of that nature. That's what I was, I'm asking.
Can I speak?
Of course.
So the way that I'd like to speak to that is, I don't know if I could go back to the presentation to show you what the exterior of the business looks like. The exterior door to the business is locked twenty-four hours a day. When somebody approaches the business, a security guard has to check their identification before they can ever even enter into the entry vestibule. Once you get into an entry vestibule, you actually have to be checked into the system and verified yet again before you're even allowed onto the sales floor. The windows are frosted. The signage does not indicate, you know, that there's any cannabis inside. You know, what we heard candidly was that a lot of the community was very supportive of this location and approach. Because today, if you look right across from the Pinedale Elementary School, there's a liquor store and a smoke shop. I believe the liquor store actually offers a student discount. So we do not have the ability to have any forward-facing information whatsoever about the type of business we have. So when you see our business from the outside, you would have no idea whether it's a jewelry store, you know, a cannabis dispensary, or a spa.
I'm not sure if you're familiar with the existing Embark location, but it's, you know, a benign, sort of just white building, to Dustin's point, with the frosted windows. So there's no ability for youth to see inside. But I think, I think what you're asking is, are youth going to be able to, you know, access this facility?
Not necessarily access, as much as it is the traffic flow, as much as it is the potential conflict of kids school out, times that there are peak hours where individuals are in the parking lot. I'm not, I understand about, forgive me, Brother Che, I'm not trying to engage in a debate. I'm just wanting my question to be answered a little bit more in detail. I'm not, to say I'm not concerned about a liquor store is not in the equation. But the liquor store is already there, okay? What I'm saying is, is added to it, what this potentially caused conflict when kids are getting out of school, if those peak hours would conflict with the times that kids are out of school. I know you already said you don't really have that data, which is understandable. What I'm saying is, is what is the peak hours of others similar in other locations within our city?
So within the existing operations on Blackstone, but obviously further down, peak hours are between seven and ten PM?
Seven and ten PM. Thank you.
I just always caveat it because I don't want to tell you-
No, I totally understand.
Okay. I'm like, oh, God.
That was my question.
Just part of the neighborhood compatibility plan. I mean, this is part of our ongoing, you know, work with the community. If there are concerns, it's a direct feedback loop. Operating this business is a privilege and not a right. We're up for annual renewal. If we create a conflict there, we will have invested significant sums of money and have that permit revoked. You know, so it's in our business interest not to allow that to happen. And we actually find that having security guards present in areas that have frequent vagrancy issues actually makes that a safer place, you know, to approach. A Little Caesars is an example.
Is there a policy for loitering or anything of the sort?
Oh, yeah. Loitering is not tolerated. So that's a published policy. And in fact, we have an operational plan that essentially when somebody walks into the business, they're identified as a patron coming in. Once they're given one of our Embark exit bags, security is trained to understand that that individual must vacate the premises. And we actually have a policy where we will, you know, there's a three-strikes policy where we will remove somebody and permanently make it so they're not allowed to. But even more broadly, outside of our patrons, anybody who's loitering in that premises, you know, will be asked to leave. And if we need to escalate that, then we would involve the police department. And that's why the property owner wrote, you know, a very voluminous letter in support to kind of back up the points we've just made.
I think in terms of our existing location on Blackstone, speaking totally candidly, when we were preparing to, you know, when we were initiating construction, meaning before we were operational there, it was a mess. There were needles throughout the parking lots. There were folks engaging in illicit and inappropriate activities with frequency at all hours of the day or the night. The reality of the security presence associated with these businesses and as mandated by the city of Fresno is that it creates an inhospitable environment for such activities. But part of why our good neighbor policy is not just within the four walls of our business, but in fact, within that shopping center and as appropriate and allowable by law, beyond that, is so that what we aren't doing is pushing someone from in front of our business to in front of two businesses down. And so as Devon knocked on doors with nearly all of the businesses within a three-block radius, what we heard resoundingly was an excitement that with this increased security presence comes an opportunity for these businesses to have a partner in addressing many of the issues that are plaguing their businesses today. Because they, you know, they're not equipped. They don't have security guards that can assist in addressing these issues. So, you know, bringing security cameras, bringing security guards, bringing a volunteer group that's going out and picking up trash and discouraging littering and not allowing for loitering and vagrancy and other issues really can be transformational. Again, not just for, you know, the location we're proposing, the suite we're proposing to operate is vacant. It was a check cashing business. But, you know, for the other businesses, both within that shopping center and along that Blackstone corridor, this becomes an opportunity for real partnership.
Yeah, thank you. I had a question. Can you tell me exactly how many community meetings you guys have held with this neighborhood?
Yeah, so we hosted the community meeting in June. We, as I mentioned in the slides, we've gone door-to-door, I think, four separate weeks, five separate weeks of door-to-door canvassing. We actually initiated outreach to a handful of leaders from this community three years ago. I will share that three years ago, folks weren't super supportive of taking these meetings. Cannabis wasn't in this community yet, and there wasn't the ability to have the normalization around conversations that exist today now that these businesses are. But beginning at that point in time, we initiated conversations. We've talked with a handful and had meetings with nonprofit leaders, specifically within this community. We've talked with community leaders and neighborhood association leaders specifically within this community. We hosted the meeting for all community members in June within this community. And then, as I mentioned, we've continued to go door-to-door-to-door in the time since. I will share it's been a little challenging because, you know, there's a real intensity between those who support this project and those who oppose it. And so there has been, it has made us mindful and cognizant of ensuring that these meetings are happening in a variety of places and in a variety of different ways such that folks feel comfortable having these conversations.
Thank you.
Question, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes. On your previous location, was there any issues that you were obligated to call the police department?
So we have not had any issues of public health and safety in our store. We've had, you know, there's been, you know, we had a domestic violence issue that had nothing really to do with our store, one of our employees, where the police came out for that. But we have not had any, you know, issues whatsoever at our location. We've been operating for, you know, well over a year now. And I think, you know, if you look at that neighborhood before, that shopping center prior to us opening and to what you see now, I mean, there's so much more benefit for the neighboring businesses. It's completely cleaned up. We're just really proud of the impact that we've made on that corner.
I will share that the corner of Blackstone and Gettysburg is a highly frequented intersection. And so there have been myriad issues not associated with our business that occur. There have been vehicular accidents. There have been a variety of incidents. And so, yes, we have absolutely, in cases where our security could be helpful, engaged them in that to, in some cases, diffuse some of those situations and have reached out to law enforcement as it relates to ultimately handling those things because they're outside the scope of, you know, our business. That said, I will share our, we just celebrated the one-year anniversary of our existing storefront. And so as part of that project, we are required to have a full audit, including a walkthrough with the police department. And in that walkthrough with the police department and with the city manager's office, and I will be very clear, I'm paraphrasing what he said. The police department expressed, I believe, a sincere gratitude for the partnership we've provided and a real confidence in the methods by which we've been operating our business and the acumen and partnership in which our security has been able to address low-level incidents, again, often not resulting from the operations of our business.
Thank you. Question, I just have two more questions for you. Is, so with the Blackstone and Gettysburg location, how close is it to a sensitive site like a school?
So, you know, over a thousand feet, we stopped really measuring. A thousand feet is our point of measurement. We do have, you know, in other communities, we have stores that are much closer to sensitive uses, but residential. I mean, we literally, in three of our communities, our stores abut a residential use, and we've coexisted peacefully for multiple years of our operations. So we've been operating the company since twenty twenty in that format.
Got you. And then question for you is, with the other location not falling through, what made you guys decide on this specific location?
So we presented the zoning map to our head of security. So there's a few layers of available properties in Fresno. So number one, if you look at the eligible zoning map, that you guys have a great GIS map. By the way, thank you to the staff who did all of this mapping work, which makes it really transparent for the public. But if you look at that GIS map, there are very limited areas where you can place a business. Once you drill down, not only in the limited areas where you can cite a business, businesses that have commercial loans on them that are federally, you know, backed loans cannot lease to cannabis businesses. So that reduces the supply, you know, even more significantly. So what our security, head of security looked for were commercial arteries that were true commercial corridors that had ample parking, where we had, you know, adequate site control. And he actually selected this site, you know, for us.
So just to kind of reiterate it, sort of like concentric circles as you're drilling in, right? So there's the municipal zoning requirements which limit available properties.
Correct. I get it too. But I think it's, I think the biggest thing is, I think you, you know, having chosen this site, I would anticipate you guys, it seems like you guys are very strategic too with what you guys are doing too. And I would, I would expect that you guys would have anticipated there would be a lot of pushback with it being so close to an elementary school and the fact that you're in this Pinedale residence where, you know, if you look at it from their perspective, it's the socioeconomic status over there, right? From their perspective, it's like, okay, well, we have these businesses coming in. Why can't we get something better coming in too? Right? Okay.
Well, if I may, we did, we very much factored that in. And had we not received the level of support that we had in the months of outreach, number one, I think fear is a larger driver than support. Many of the folks who support us, you know, are not willing to, you know, take time out of their day, but they're very, very supportive. I think fear and opposition really does drive more turnout. But I will say that in our initial survey, had we, when we canvassed the thousands of doors that we did, had that support not completely outweighed opposition, we wouldn't be moving, we wouldn't be here in front of you today.
And I think the map that we posted was really a testament to that. And that's why I sought to zoom in specifically to the outreach that had occurred in Pinedale. And, you know, we, the reality is you can't talk to three thousand people for three years, right? That's not feasible. But we certainly did start outreach a number of years ago. We have continued that outreach. And it was, I want to reiterate to Dustin's point, it was that feedback that provides a counterbalance to, I think, the notion that this is universally opposed. That feedback is, in many ways, what got us excited about the opportunity for community partnership.
And it was the, to your point, the economic, you know, the economic issues within the community. I mean, the idea that we can bring real careers. So when it's like, can we get something better? I don't know what companies are out paying a living wage that are union employers that are seeking to cite. So for us, we feel like we're bringing significant benefit with security and bringing meaningful jobs and six figures of community reinvestment directly into that neighborhood.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate your patience in answering all these questions.
We appreciate your time.
And we'll bring you guys back once the public gets the opportunity to speak to you. Okay? All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and open public comments. And this is for individuals who would like to speak in support. Does it support? Okay. And again, just want to reiterate, please be respectful of one another. Each individual will have two minutes to speak. When you approach a podium, please state your name, address. I'm going to go ahead and I have all these cards, okay? So I'm going to go ahead and read these names. If I mess up on your name, please forgive me. I completely understand. Growing up as a mom kid in Fresno, I would always get my name mispronounced too, okay? All right. So the first one in support is a Ms. Danielle Para. Again, please be respectful. You're going to hear, you're going to hear two bills. The first soft bill, that's going to indicate that you have one minute left to speak, okay? So don't hesitate. If you hear that first soft bill, you can continue to speak.
Very good. Hi, my name is Danielle Para. I'm writing a letter in support of James Hensley. He is the owner of D and L Floral, a local business located at Catty Corner to Embark's proposed location. It reads, "To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter to express our company's full support towards the establishment of the new Embark store to be located at seventy-three sixty-three North Blackstone Avenue in Pinedale. I've spoken to Devon several times regarding this location, and am fully satisfied that she is in control of any security issues and concerns that we have addressed with her, which were few. As a business owner, she is aware of the needs of the community and has taken the necessary steps to address any concerns. I feel the company will be a welcome addition to the local business community, and the increased security presence will only assist other businesses in maintaining a safe and welcoming atmosphere. We offer our full endorsement along with the desire to work together to better the Pinedale community to Devon and the Embark company. We look forward to working with them. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, James Hensley."
And forgive me again, my apologies. And forgive me again, my apologies. James, he's, what's your relation to him?
I'm just reading the letter on behalf of him.
Okay. Got you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, the next individual is Ms. Sabrina Sanes. Ms. Sabrina, please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, miss.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Sanes. And I state my address.
Yes, please.
1311 East San Bruno, Fresno, California, 93710. And I am in, well, I'm a Fresno resident, and I am in full support of Embark. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so we have the next individual. I believe this is Ms. Anna Karen. State your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Anna Karen Rodriguez, and my address is 2185 East Shaw Avenue, 93710. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to provide a comment today. As a current Embark employee, I am so excited for this new location. If you guys do end up proceeding with this, just because it's going to offer a lot of growth to our current employees that have already been there for a whole year and also provide plenty of jobs for the surrounding community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have a Ms. Evelyn Nava.
Good evening, you guys. My name is Evelyn Nava. I am from Fresno as well. My address is 914 South Clermont Avenue, Fresno, California. I am here tonight as a proud member of the UFCW Local Eight and as an Embark employee. Embark is a responsible cannabis operator that is committed to ensuring our operations are a benefit to the immediate neighborhood, not only to us, but the community as well. Embark is 100% committed to local hiring with emphasis, emphasizing on hiring from immediate neighborhood, meaning locally here. This ensures that our storefront and our team are committed to making a positive impact towards our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And please note too, those on Zoom, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to allow those individuals in the podium to speak first, and then I'll make sure I get to those individuals on Zoom. Next, we have a Ms. Sandra Berlin. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name's Sandra Berlin. My address is 2647 Santa Ana Avenue.
Ms. Sandra, may you please lower the mic? Thank you.
Sorry.
You're fine.
My name's Sandra Berlin. I live at 2647 Santa Ana in Clovis, California. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of Embark and their proposed storefront at 7363 North Blackstone Avenue. Embark has proven ourselves as responsible, safe, community-centric operators, both through the city's cannabis rigorous licensing process and in practice through our current Fresno storefront operations. And knowing Embark, their leadership and their commitment to the community betterment, and in hearing the feedback tonight, I am confident that Embark's presence will be a significant benefit to the business, businesses, patrons, and local residents in enhancing community safety. Thank you.
Thank you, miss. And next, we have a Ms. Rachel Alvarez.
Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Rachel Alvarez. I'm at 3927 North Palm in Fresno, and I am in support of Embark.
Thank you. Next, we have Liza Alvarez. Please state your name, address, two minutes.
Hi, my name is Liza Alvarez. I live at 470 West Beachwood, apartment 401. I am here in support of Embark. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, looks like a Rodrigo Ariz. Rodrigo, you need to work on this penmanship.
I was here to apologize for that. That's my bad. My name's Rogelio Ariz. I am here to share my support for Embark and their proposed storefront. I am proud to be a member of Embark's Fresno team and member of the UFCW Local Eight. Yeah, both through the city's cannabis rigorous licensing process and its practice, through our current Fresno storefront operations, and knowing Embark, their leadership and their commitment to community betterment. And in hearing the feedback tonight, I am confident that Embark's presence will be significant benefit to the businesses, patrons, and local residents, enhancing the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, we have a Mr. Caio Brano. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next one. We have a Ms. Lanisha Sanigo. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. My name is Lanisha Senegal, and I reside at 2350 East Aluvio. And I am here purely on a social equity lens, from the personal, purely on a social equity lens. I support Embark's license. I want to just basically see our city collect the tax dollars that will pay for our youth programs, hospitals, police, and fire, and see that they continue to direct business to minority entrepreneurs. The tax dollars collected by responsible taxpayers as Embark will help us to better achieve our social equity goals. We all know that if these industries are not approved through the proper business process, this same market will end up on the black market. I grew up in the neighborhoods where the drug dealers were the main characters of our blocks, and at any peak hour of the day, these dealers who have unregulated boundaries are in the closest proximity to our kids, schools, and walking trails to and from our home. They are untaxed, and with that same black market cash, they are the ones who's buying the Mercedes-Benz, the Rolls Royces, and shining that carrot for our kids to look up to. I want to see our city properly regulate these industries as we already have, and I'm confident in the merit-based approval process that you use to qualify our vendor. And as noted in the presentation, they received an outstanding 33, 93% review rate. I want to also see that the social equity investment Embark earns to be, continue to be reinvested in our youth programs, such as in, directly in Pine Dale. There's a study that suggests that some of the key factors that create upward mobility for our families is when we can achieve things like our kids having a quality education. This is paid by the taxes that they invest. $3 million in which they have one location. Housing stability paid by our taxes. Economic inclusion, when we create new jobs and support businesses, paid by taxes. And transportation access, broadband internet connectivity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, we have a Mr. Doug Kessler. Please state your name, address, two minutes.
My name is Doug Kessler. My address is 1486 Nelson Boulevard in Selma, and I'm speaking for Teresa Vivian Moreno, 363 Pine Dale Avenue, and her grandson Omar Moreno. Teresa's 95 years old, and I'm very good friends with her son, who's working for me. And she is just, the reason I came to do this is, she is very, very adamant about, it's about time Pine Dale will get something and get something hopefully that will go back into the community. She will use this as medical marijuana herself at someplace that, it's kind of funny because she keeps arguing with her kids, I can walk to it and get it and not rely on you guys being late and doing it. She's a lifetime Pine Dale resident and very much in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a Ms. Mary Helen Perez. Please state your name, address, two minutes.
Hi, I'm Mary Helen Perez. I live at 435 West Locust Avenue in Pinedale, California. I am a lifelong Pine Dale resident. I am for Embark. I was kind of back and forth on it, and I did some own, my own research besides what I had heard from both sides. And one of the things that I did was, I have a cousin that is a teacher in the Alameda area, and she does live in the area where Embark is there. She says that crime rate has went down. She says that they do, they did keep their word as far as 1% of it goes back into the community. It was being used by the Alameda Boys and Girls Club, some of the schools around there. It helped out with some scholarship money. So it does do kind of what they said, and it also cleaned up the area, she said, really well. So in doing that and kind of looking at some other things, I decided that that's where I wanted to go. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have a Mr. David Rodriguez. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, sir. Let's, please be respectful of one another.
I'm used to it. My name is David Rodriguez, 409 West Aluvio, Pine Dale, lifelong citizen of Pine Dale, except for 20 years of the military service, but, and I came back right after that. I want to read a statement from, from the president of the Pine Dale Community Association. For her, she couldn't make it. As many people in our community know, I was not initially supportive of the cannabis company, but Embark has done a, working, engaged with the community and each, and earned our trust. The Pine Dale Network, Pine Dale Community Association President Lisa Guzman is a second-generation Pine Dale local business owner, and I get to know them, I got to know them and trusted Embark. Will be a positive business leader and benefits for the community, as evidenced by their extensive operation elsewhere on Blackstone and significant outreach. All ready?
You still have one minute.
Okay. Okay, then I'm going to cut that short there. But we, we as Pine Dale Community Association, support Embark. As for myself, I was against Embark right off the bat. Again, I had a lot of interchange with them, and they convinced me that they're professional. And I did do outreach to other communities they serve, and they were, they were all very, they didn't point them out. I just reached out to them, and everybody, positive feedback from all of them, long-term, short-term. One of them's Lake Tahoe, one of them's, Martinas, and a couple other places. They're, you should feel good that they come to Pine Dale because they're going to do a lot of things for us.
Thank you. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we have a Lupe Duran. Ms. Lupe, please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Lupe Duran, 274 Westford Avenue, Pine Dale, 93650. Hi, my name is Lupe Duran. I am born and raised Pine Dale resident, and I support Embark. I am a mother of four, and I'm raising my kids in Pine Dale. I am very supportive of Embark because I believe they will deliver benefits to our community. I have personally contributed cannabis with Donovan numerous days and lots of support from our community, other than people not wanting to come today because of intimidation from the opposition, but there was plenty of support through our community. So I support Embark as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a next Marie, Ms. Marie Geteris. Ms. Marie, please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, miss.
Thank you. My name's Marie Geteris. I currently reside at 433 West Aluvio. So coming into this, I had a lot of mixed feelings, and at this point, I am completely supporting Embark. There's a lot of things that are going on within the community that have already started to be cleaned up. For all my fellow Pine Dale residents that are here to support Pine Dale, I want to know where your support was with cleaning up the neighborhood and making sure our children were safe, because you're not out there cleaning up the needles, you're not getting rid of the homeless, you're not doing anything. So for an outside company to come in and take care of that, instead of degrading them, talking about them, or trying to push them out, why not support them to help us support our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a Ms. Anna Herrera. Just a forewarning, it's 7:27 at, maybe at 7:45, we're going to allow for the commissioner to take a 10-minute break too. Okay? Please state your name, name, address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Anna Herrera, and I live at 1677 East Lexington in Fresno. I am here in support of Embark at their proposed location in Pine Dale. I am the secretary of the Pine Dale Community Association, and at first, I was opposed to this location, and new for me, it was going to be a hard no. But I did my research, and now I can say I am in support of Embark's location, and this is why. Clearly, they are beyond the 800 feet required by the city ordinance for cannabis from the school, so it is in compliance. I drove to the location and parked to see what the traffic was like and to see what the parking was like. There wasn't a lot of traffic, and there was parking. I then found out they had another location in Fresno and darn near didn't find it and wouldn't have unless I knew it was called Embark. There was nothing there that made me think that it was a cannabis location. Clovis, or I'm sorry, Embark has followed the ordinance for cannabis adopted by the city council. Citizens were afforded the opportunity to address the proposed ordinance. The time to object to 800 feet from a school was then, not now. The time to object to traffic was then, not now. The time to object to armed guards was then, not now. Embark has gone above and beyond to follow the ordinance and to gain the support of the citizens of Pine Dale. I hope this commission will seriously consider their application and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a Mr. Devin. My apologies.
That's all right. Hi, esteemed commissioners, my name is Devin Wardlow, and I am the vice president of Public Affairs for Embark. I have personally led Embark's outreach in this community for over three years, knocking on hundreds of doors and having thousands of conversations to authentically earn the trust of this community. I am also a planning commissioner in my hometown. I hold myself and the outreach we do to the same standard I hold projects that come before me when I am in your shoes. I understand the value and the importance of neighborhood compatibility, community engagement, and community benefits. And we have far exceeded the requirements and expectations in all of these respects. First, Embark is a retail use, seeking to operate in a retail complex that is compliantly zoned and outside of the city's sensitive use buffers. It is compatible with the surrounding uses and neighborhood. We have conducted extensive community engagement, earning the support of nearly every business within three blocks of our proposed storefront, hundreds of community members, and prominent businesses and community organizations such as the Pine Dale Community Association. We have proposed meaningful community benefits through the empowerment of local leaders to direct our community benefit funding and have a demonstrated track record of fulfilling these commitments. I am proud to report that Embark has received overwhelming support. Businesses cite improved security, safety, and commerce as a central reason for supporting Embark. Residents also cite the benefit of enhanced security, as well as local, union jobs, and meaningful community benefits as reasons they support Embark. We have gone above and beyond in engaging and garnering this community's support. Yet a small group of individuals that are opposed have resorted to billing and intimidating residents and businesses that have signed letters of support with me for Embark. This is very unfortunate, very unusual, and frankly, unacceptable. Embark has done the work and earned the trust of this community, and I respectfully ask this commission to support staff's recommendation. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, miss. Next, we have a Santana Mosse. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Santana, 1518 West Sierra Avenue. Let me open this up a quick. Okay. I am here to share my support in, for Embark Fresno. As a local resident, I think it's, it's a safe access, legal, and the cannabis, like the safe cannabis is important, and off the streets, way better. Embark is a responsible operator, bringing in significant, significant security and community benefits to this neighborhood. Please support the staff's recommendation. Thank you, guys.
Next, we have a Mr. Fernando Sanchez. Mr. Fernando, please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Fernando Sanchez. I live on 1017 North Lynn Avenue, and being part of the community right by Blackstone, I feel like Embark really does go above and beyond to make sure that everything is done correctly to policies. You know, security is good. You know, security is good. Yeah, of course, you're gonna worry about your kids and all that stuff, but it's gonna be in the street regardless, so it's better to do it legally. I feel like, you know, have to be a certain age, you need your card or whatever. So that's why I say I'm here to support. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So next one, I'm trying to read this. I believe this is Anthony. Mr. Anthony, last name starts with the S. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hello, this is Anthony Stoner. I support Embark, that's, and that's all.
Thank you. Next, we have a Ms. Angelique Miranda. Ms. Angelique, please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Angelique Miranda. I live at 2788 Clovis, California, 93611. And I just want to say that I love, have all full support for Embark.
Thank you. Next, we have a Ms. Jennifer Cruz. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Jennifer Cruz, 2729 North Laverne Avenue, Fresno. My name is Jennifer Cruz, and I am a manager at a giant nonprofit here in downtown Fresno. I'm here in support of Embark and their proposed cannabis retail storefront. I grew up in this community, I attended Clovis Unified Schools. I currently have teenagers in Clovis Unified Schools. On that note, in the 90s, the high schools were full of weed, and they still are. I just wanted to say that because I believe in Embark. And I've been getting to know their team, and I'm confident that they are a positive addition to this community. They have proven themselves as responsible, community-centric operators that invest meaningfully into the needs and priorities of our community. As demonstrated through their current Fresno operations, they have developed an impactful approach to community benefits by empowering trusted local leaders to direct all of their community benefit funds back into the community. This is real community empowerment. Embark is a type of business and cannabis operator that is committed to doing right by the community. I urge this commission to support Embark and their proposed project at 7363 North Blackstone Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a Jess Gonzalez. Jess Gonzalez, moving on. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Jess Gonzalez. I live at 1577 Fourth Street in Clovis. And I'm here representing the organization, Cis de Puebla. We're a community organization involved in trying to help the community in different ways. And basically, the reason that we are in favor of this effort is because we feel that Pinedale's gonna benefit in very many different ways. Including the Boys and Girls Club, they're gonna get money that they right now don't have, and that they're gonna get better facilities, and this is gonna help the children. Okay, at the same time, there's gonna be new jobs, and that will also help the community. For the last week, I have walked along with several other people. I have walked the streets of Pinedale. I've talked to a lot of people. I would say that, you know, in knocking at doors, fighting against dogs, well, actually not fighting, running from dogs. But the support for this station, for this store, it was about five to one, about five to one of the people that answered the door on us, okay? Now, a lot of the, the people that were against it or are against it, they're against it because they're afraid of the smoking. Okay, well, if kids aren't allowed to go into the store because they're minors, that shouldn't be a problem. At the same time, they overlooked the fact that cannabis, there's a lot of medicinal use for it. My mom, who passed away, but she used, all her life, she had problems with her joints. And she always had plants of marijuana at home, cannabis, okay? And she would boil this and put a towel in there and hot, put it on there, and this would help her. A lot of people ignore this. Part of the walking was we, we told people about this.
Okay.
Okay, we told people about this, and they didn't know that marijuana had these different uses. Thank you.
Mr. Jess, there's a statute of limitations, I won't report your mother. Next, we have Mr. David Butovong.
David Butovong, 537 East Harvard Avenue, Fresno, California. Good evening, my name is David Butovong. I'm here to express my support for Embark. As a dedicated Fresno resident, actively engaged in community efforts, things with LGBTQ spaces, the Asian community, the unhoused, and people experiencing homelessness. And also as a member of Embark's Fresno Community Advisory Board. You know, Embark is different. I don't just put my name on anything. They actively empower community leaders like myself to ensure that there's transparency, accountability, and reflecting on their commitment to fostering strong partnerships within the community, as they previously stated before. I understand that, you know, it's, there's a lot of concern about youth and kids. I mean, they can't even get in the store, you know, it'd be 21, there's guards, there's smoke shops everywhere, you know, vapes are widely marketed towards young children and youth. You know, there's other things that are bigger, human trafficking and the fentanyl crisis, right? As a Fresno resident for over four decades, I urge you to, or the planning community, I'm sorry, commission to support Embark. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a Dariana Martinez. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Dariana Martinez, 555 North Dante Avenue. My name is Dariana, and I work for Traditional Cannabis Brand. I am here to support Embark. Embark is a proven and trusted cannabis operator that works with local cannabis brands to ensure locally cultivated products are on their shelves. Traditional is a cannabis brand cultivating cannabis right here in Fresno County at our Mendota Farms. With Embark, Fresno will have a true partner in uplifting locally sourced cannabis. Embark is the right partner for Fresno. We support Embark, and I hope this commission will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Brenda Quintana. Name, address, and two minutes.
So, good evening, my name is Brenda Quintana, and I'm reading this on behalf of a neighboring business. The neighboring business is Nathan Truax from Red Wave. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today because he's working. What he wanted me to say is, thank you, commission. My name is Nathan Truax, and I'm a neighboring business and I support Embark. I operate out of Red Wave Tattoo Parlor in the retail complex just one block from Embark's proposed shop. Embark has met with us multiple times to share their plans and address any questions. They have done tons of community outreach and have been doing so for years. I am supportive of Embark because they will enhance the safety and security of our retail corridor. Today, we have a real issue with the homeless, homeless loitering and illegal drug use. As a business, we want to stop this. Embark is a business partner to help us address these issues. I support Embark, and I know that a majority of neighborhood businesses do. But those that are opposed to Embark have been bullied. They've been bullied, the businesses who do not support Embark.
Please be respectful, please be respectful.
These tactics are inappropriate and do not represent our community. I support Embark, many businesses and residents do. I hope this commission will support Embark as they have earned the support of the majority of our community. Please support Embark and help us create a more safe and vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Juan Vardo. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hi, mi nombre es Juan Araujo, vivo en la 4517 Cable Avenue, Fresno.
May you please get closer to the mic just so we can hear you.
Hi, mi nombre es Juan Araujo, vivo en la 4517 Cable Avenue, Fresno. Estoy aquí para apoyar a Embark. Embark se compromete a garantizar que las marcas cultivadas localmente estén disponibles para las residentes de Fresno. Nos hemos asociado y trabajado con Embark durante años y estamos orgullosos de la relación y la asociación que tenemos. Embark comparte nuestros valores y se compromete a proporcionar productos seguros de calidad y garantizar una experiencia positiva para sus clientes. Como se demuestra en su operamiento actual en Embark Fresno. Embark es un operador centrado en la comunidad responsable y cumple con las normas. En el instituto esta comisión a apoyar a Embark.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Elena Martinez Ortiz.
Chair, before we move on, Jose, can you give us a quick summary? Or, I don't know, Israel, do we have anybody on staff who can do a quick translation for us? We don't have translators, official translators in the audience. I don't know if, if.
I was the director clerk, I didn't really hear.
You weren't listening, yeah, that's fine.
No, I didn't hear what was said. I was trying. I tried.
He's, no, you're running the, the audio visual, so.
Chair, can our commissioner do it?
That would be fine. If you were, if you were paying attention to the comments, yeah, absolutely, okay, that's fine.
She was just talking about the benefits to the community that Embark has, and she was very proud of all the benefits that have been proven. That's what.
Thank you. Go ahead, state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Okay, Elena Martinez, address is 4518 East Cablean, Fresno, California. My name is Elena, and I'm here in support of Embark and their proposed project at 7363 North Blackstone Avenue. And working with the Embark team for, I've been working with the Embark team for years. I know they are committed to doing right by their partners and the community in which they serve. Embark is a meaningful partner in the cannabis space, working to uplift brands and educate adults. Embark has proven themselves as an excellent retail cannabis company operating a safe, compliant, and responsible cannabis retail storefronts throughout California. Embark will be a positive addition to this community, as they have been to each community they serve. I urge this commission to support Embark and their proposed retail storefront at 7363 North Blackstone Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more. We'll allow these two to speak. Those on Zoom, after there's two speakers, we'll take a 15-minute break, and then I'll allow the individuals on Zoom to speak in support of the project, okay? The next individual is Bianca Martinez. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Bianca Martinez. I locally reside in Las Baños, California, 1639 Abrahtus Street. I work for Traditional, a locally cultivated Fresno County cannabis brand, and I'm here to support, I am here in support of Embark. Embark shares our commitment to shopping local and promoting locally sourced cannabis. Embark is trusted, is a trusted cannabis operator throughout the region and state with over eight operational storefronts today. They have earned the trust of many communities and continue to demonstrate through action their commitment to the community. I respectfully urge the commission to support Embark and their proposed storefront at 7363 North Blackstone Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Then next is Ebon Christian. Mr. Christian, please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, sir.
My name is Evan Christian, and my address is 6585 North College Avenue. I am a community member, also a consumer. I've bought cannabis from Embark before. And Embark has created an effective and safe business that not only I have benefited from, but the community has more importantly. Embark is creating job opportunities to people within the community, which is imperative, knowing the disadvantages brown and black bodies have had in the cannabis industry in the past. Embark's partnerships and programs that they've provided within the community directly speaks to their scope of work and their mission for their company. So, yeah, thank you to Embark for all the stuff they've done for the community. Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm in favor.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, so it's currently going to be 7:50. We'll go ahead and take a 15-minute recess. We'll resume at 8:05. Thank you.
Alright, everyone. Let's all please, everyone, please get seated. Everyone, please get seated. We're going to resume the meeting. Everyone, please get seated. We're going to resume the meeting. It's currently 8:06.
I think the chambers are still on mute. Can you please unmute? Sorry, thank you.
Perfect. It's 8:06. We're going to resume the meeting. We'll go ahead, and I have some cards on here that haven't been marked, but what we'll do is we'll allow individuals on Zoom to speak. If I haven't called your name and you want to speak in support of the project, you're in the chambers too, I'll allow the individuals on Zoom to speak first, and then I'll open it up to those individuals who haven't spoken, who are in support of that project, okay? Janice, do we have, go ahead and let the first individual on Zoom speak, please.
Will do. John?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Heisey, H-E-I-S-E, 3485 West Shaw, Fresno. I'm the Director of Collective Bargaining for UFCW Local 8. We represent over 30,000 members in Northern and Central California in the retail industry, including Embark locations in Lake Tahoe, Chico, Sacramento, and Fresno. I can wholeheartedly confirm that Embark is a good union employer, providing industry-leading wages, meaningful health insurance, as well as retirement benefits, and much, much more through their union contract. We choose carefully who we partner with, and Embark maintains the highest professional business standards, as shown in their merit-based approval, and we very much support their efforts to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's go ahead and let the next individual speak. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Nora Lee Gipner, former city councilperson in Martinez, California. And I wanted to explain that when I, first of all, when I was on council, cannabis became, came before us. And I was in support of cannabis. And we experienced with our first cannabis club, a lot of success and a lot of extra income to our coffers and other public benefits. When Bark came aboard for their location, I was not in support of their location, I supported the business. I was concerned of being on Alhambra Avenue, where the main thoroughfare is into Martinez, and just a few blocks away from the high school. They proved me wrong. And Bark has never been a problem with traffic, with kids loitering, no parents complaining. They've, you know, added a lot of money to our coffers also. They provided the Boys and Girls Club of Martinez, drug education program. They've given grants to the high school drama department, and much, much more. So I just wanted the people of Fresno to know, they've been a humongous benefit to the city of Martinez. Thank you very much. And no problems also, none ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's let the next individual speak. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Those are all the hands on Zoom.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Janice, I appreciate that. Those in, in here, if I haven't called your name yet and you want to speak in support of the project, please approach the podium, state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Hope Salazar. Good evening. My family has been in Pinedale since 1920. My grandparents, my mom was born in Pinedale in 1926. I'm myself in 1954, not telling my age. My children, 1971, and my grandchildren, first born was 1997, all have attended Pinedale schools, including Nelson. I've had discussions with the Embark team, and I believe their project will be beneficial for our community. I do and always will love my hometown, Pinedale. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals who would like to speak in support? Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Eric Noel, 2674 East Los Altos Avenue. I would like to say I support this. I don't live in the community, but I have friends in the community. I've eaten at Taco Grande many times. I grew up in the neighborhood where the original store is at Gettysburg and Blackstone. And I frequent that area to visit friends often. And I will say that there are establishments in that area, that it is true that they are part of the tide that has raised all the boats there. Romo's Furniture is one, Embark is another. It used to be undesirable before these two establishments moved in. And right now, by Taco Grande, when I walk out to go down to the hardware store, it's horrible, the things that are, the blight, the drugs. And also, I agree with many who have stated, well, some who have stayed here today, that this is a legal operation. It is a small slice in the pie to get rid of the horrible drug-dealing conglomerates in our country. They do everything right. People don't have to, adult responsible adults don't have to rely on going to the streets to get possibly fentanyl-laced now, fentanyl-laced weed. This is ridiculous. So I think it's a real positive, not to mention all the other community enhancements via the grants and things like that. But I think that this is going to be a real positive, and I support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other individuals? Any other individuals who would like to speak in support? Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Joey Miranda. Uh, my address is twenty-seven eighty-eight Pontiac Avenue, Clovis, California, nine-three-six-one-one. Um, my name is Joey Miranda and I am the Embark Fresno General Manager at our current Fresno storefront. Embark is a safe, responsible, and compliant cannabis retail operation that puts the safety, security, and betterment of the community we serve at the forefront of everything we do. We were first to open in Fresno and I'm excited to see our team ready to open our second storefront at seventy-three sixty-three North Blackstone Avenue. Understanding the sensitivities of loitering and vagrancy in this complex, I am confident our team will breathe new life into this complex. As demonstrated in our current Fresno operations, Embark will be a positive benefit to the immediate community bringing security and commerce. Our team goes above and beyond every day to ensure retail cannabis is safe, educational, and a positive experience. Across the company, our average customer is forty-five years old, and I'm proud to say it is a store that you would feel comfortable bringing your grandparents to. We look forward to hiring a hundred percent locally with a specific emphasis on immediate neighborhood as we be, as we believe hiring from the immediate community is the best way to ensure Embark is reflective of the community we serve. Our team of local employees, state-of-the-art security, and trained security guards all work to create a safe, clean, welcoming environment. I'm in support.
Thank you, sir. Any other individuals who would like to speak in support? I see none. All right, we'll go ahead and move to those individuals who would like to speak in opposition. First individual is Shirley Savala. State your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Shirley Savala, seven-seven-three-seven North Princess Avenue, Fresno, California. My husband served in the military twenty years. I've been married thirty years and I've been a grandmother and a very successful mother and a successful single parent. I'm a volunteer and I have a really good reputation. Maybe my family doesn't think I'm perfect, but I do. PCA Association workers, February twenty-twenty-three, never followed PCA bylaws. Um, and the nonprofit right now is questionable of whether or not they're following the bylaws and some documents have been filed. The PCA is not in good standing. Um, the PCA has, um, never, um, I joined in February and as a member, just a volunteer to help with the Pineville Community Association uh, one-hundred-year parade and, um, it was very difficult for me to work with them, working under the chairman of the raffle company, uh, 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 raffle thing. We had raised six thousand dollars within a week and a half. We have yet to have the opportunity to even dispense money and scholarship to the Pineville Elementary School. Um, homes within eight hundred feet were, had never been, um, contacted by Embark. The people, most of the majority of the people there were up at this podium, were employees speaking on behalf of Embark. And, um, the president, I saw her once at a meeting and from February to, um, I think it's August, one time, to close, um, Pinedale, uh, let's see, we have employees, we did that location. They have the perfect location for all access from the freeway at Friant and Forty-One, Forty-One and Blackstone. They can come in all night long, all day long, cars coming in, and that's why they want that location, to access copper and to be able to get lots of, lots of money coming in and out. Um, if they donate, the taxes will come, yes, to our community, but we really don't need it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, everyone, please. I love the enthusiasm, but let's be respectful, please, okay? Next, we have Virginia Mendez Bueno.
Buena.
Buena, my apologies, miss.
Nobody gets it right. That's my husband's name.
Got you.
It is one of the rarest names in the world, by the way. Uh, there aren't that many, buenas. Nobody can say it anyway. So I'm Virginia Mendez Buena, and, uh, I am a retired educator. I was an educator for, since age eighteen, I got my first classroom, until I retired from Fresno Unified some years ago. I was also one of the first teachers that was selected by Doc Buchanan to reopen Pinedale Elementary back thirty-some years ago. I said, I think some of the historians have that better than me. So I was there for a few years. My children attended Pinedale, as did my neighborhood, which by the way, I never got a visit from anybody knocking at my door, and I never bullied anybody. I promise you.
Please, please.
Okay, so my, um, children went there, I have one minute. My children went to Pinedale. For that reason, I think we need to look at a broader view of who attends Prime, Pinedale. It's not just the children in the community right next to Pinedale. And I know there's the thousand square feet, a thousand feet or whatever it is that you need to have in between the cannabis place and the school. But here's the key to this. I was a, um, school administrator for many years, and when we had a lockdown, it could have been the event, the unfortunate event could have been taking place three thousand feet away. It didn't matter. The thousand feet is just an idea somebody came up with with some research behind it. It hasn't changed the fact that we're not looking at what's best, what's a best environment for children. Nobody's talked about that. And then my community is Pinedale, though I don't live in Pinedale. I live in another neighborhood. When I went around collecting...
Go ahead and wrap it up.
When I went around collecting, uh, signatures, they weren't aware of this. Though those kids in that neighborhood attend Pinedale. It is part of our community, though we're not within the feet that everybody's asking for.
Thank you.
I had much more to say. Again, I don't bully. Thank you.
No, thank you. Let's please, uh, keep that to a minimum. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Lori Garcia. Uh, Ms. Lori, before, before you start, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and call the next three individuals. So if you can, just line up, okay? I have Linda Apparano, Carly Negrete, and Mr. Brandon Daniels. So if you can, just line up and we can get this thing moving, okay? Thank you.
My name is Lori Garcia. I live at four-seven-six-eight North Harrison Avenue. I spent my entire career of thirty-two years educating and empowering the students of Pinedale Elementary. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of those children who are voiceless in this matter. This is the third dispensary attempting to open in our one-square-mile neighborhood. The decision-making system fails poor people of color. What other way can we explain why we are here again, a mere year and a half later, when we battled the lemonade dispensary? The approval process is not hearing the voice of the people. If permitted, both District Two dispensaries will be less than a mile of, within our historic community. Spread the dispensaries out. There's no reason that both District Two dispensaries should be in our backyard. The nearest home where three children live, a family of five, three children live there, is a mere one-hundred-and-seventy-two feet from the proposed location, directly in back of the building adjacent to our laundromat with no significant boundary between it and our food court. From the start, the system demonstrated favor toward the applicant. First, the applicant is partnered with the Fresno Chamber of Compters. Second, a voting member of the District Two Project Review Committee works for the chamber. And third, the chair is a member of the applicant's community advisory board. Though he recused himself, he still made a public comment in favor of the applicant. With all due respect, this is a conflict of interest. This is socioeconomic disparity at its finest. A poor brown community doesn't stand a chance against, against a multimillion-dollar corporation. Before we even walked through the doors of City Hall, the decision to move forward on the cup was stacked against us. Is Pinedale the only school to have its neighborhood center, retail center rezoned to include cannabis? Let's be real, this wouldn't happen in any other school in Northwest Fresno. Where shopping centers near Malik and Fortner, were they rezoned?
I'll let, go ahead and wrap this thing up, okay?
Why Pinedale, again and again and again? Three years we've been doing this.
Thank you, miss.
At our centennial celebration, the city officials shook, shook hands and said they care about Pinedale. Show us you care about Pinedale.
Thank you. I don't, if you guys can, uh, no noises, you guys can do like that individual right there and do quiet hands. I don't mind that at all, okay? I don't mind that at all. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Linda Apparano, and I live at seventy-three sixty-one North San Pablo. For the past thirty years, I've worked in the community for the betterment of children and families. Yesterday, I met with Dustin and Lauren, the, um, owners of Embark. They said I've lied and that they come from a place of love and I come from a place of hate. They minimize the opposition. All of you in burgundy, they say you're a, a small, a small number. That's what they tell you. That's who you are, a small number. Friday, Lori and I received the agenda for tonight's meeting. In that meeting, they had their letters of support, the hundred-and-ten letters, one-thousand-and-ten letters. Lori and I spent literally twenty-four hours this weekend going through every letter. What, um, what Lauren, what Lauren doesn't say about, what Lauren doesn't say is eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of those one-thousand-and-ten who support live in Chevy Chase, Maryland, New Jersey, and other places beside Pinedale proper. Thirty percent, thirteen percent of their letters are from people from Pinedale proper. Lauren has said that Lori and I are lying. However, Embark has used deceptive practices in saying that Pinedale, the Pinedale community supports them. Embark said this location fits their business model. However, as residents, we say this doesn't fit our community model. Pinedale leaders should be in the forefront of decisions that would impact our community. We are the ones that have to live with the impact. We are, um, not someone in Maryland, Tennessee, or somewhere else other than Pinedale. Dustin Moore kept saying in our meeting, "We tell ourselves a story, whatever story you tell yourself", minimizing the, how the great, how the great majority of our community feels. When they said we come from a place of hate, what they are seeing is we're protecting our children and our community. We stand in the gap for them. People go to war because they have to. We are defending our community from the legacy of legal drugs. We are the, we are protecting our children from the being desensitized that marijuana is our friend because Embark builds a park for them and they send them to camp. As leaders, we stand before God and we answer, we will stand before God and answer what we did to protect our children. I will not apologize for my righteousness anger. Our children deserve to be protected and God demands it. This is why we do not support dispensaries.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Go ahead and state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Carly Negrete, seventy-one seventy-one North Sugar Pine. Pinedale is a community that lives with vulnerabilities every day, some of which is multi-generational driven. It just isn't reasonable to add a cannabis business in this environment. City leaders have a responsibility to improve the quality of life, especially in a place like Pinedale. It takes courage to, it takes courage to take a stand for what is right, especially when economics are in play. I ask you to take a stand in opposition for our families. We are resilient. Listen to us. Make us stronger. Don't put another barrier, an obstacle for us to continue in a struggle. Uplift us for our kids' sake, for a better and healthier neighborhood of hope for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you start, let me go ahead and name off three more individuals, okay? We have Matthew Ponce, Bob Sandoval, and a Rachel Chapman. Please, please line up. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Brandon Daniels. My address is two-three-four-five South Playa Avenue, Fresno, California. Uh, I am a teacher at Pinedale Elementary and I grew up in Pinedale. This dispensary is violating the spirit of the law by placing armed guards near students. A thousand feet away from a school is too close to have guns present. Can we all agree that none of us would want our children going to a school where guns were only a thousand feet away? I know, I know collectively as a city, this is unacceptable. We look at the tragedies in our nation and we all ask what could have been done to prevent it. Well, here we all are together with the opportunity to prevent a future tragedy. Let's not ask ourselves why, but let's make a decision today to help our kids have a chance. Whether this school gets put on lockdown or a shelter-in-place order is given, we all know that learning will stop. No child deserves to have their safety threatened. Kids frequent the Laundromat, our favorite Mexican restaurant, Little Caesar's, and they are all out there playing, playing with each other, play fighting, shooting water guns at each other, and all it takes is for one misunderstanding to happen. And that may very well happen. Uh, cash pickup, uh, is primary, is a, cash pickup is a primary time for robbers who will use firearms. Peak time could very well be during school hours. Students walk to Clovis West, Nelson, Casner, and Pinedale on foot, and, and Clovis West starts at eight-thirty after their eight AM start time. Kids should have a place to feel safe in our communities. Kids deserve a place to feel safe in, in, in Pinedale and everywhere near it. Embark should go somewhere else. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, sir.
My name is Matthew Ponce, nineteen thirty-six North Fulton. I grew up in Pinedale. Pinedale is historic. Pinedale is sacred. You know, we've seen this happen before when all our people were removed from the Yosemite Valley. We've seen this happen thirty years ago when the Chacones were removed from the Walmart area. Now it's gentrified. We see this now happening again. And we are here, you know, to fight and to, to show you guys that, you know, it ain't, you know, we're tired of it and we don't need it in our community. We need local stuff coming from our community. We need more art. You know, I have a art, I'm an artist out of Pinedale. I'm a countrywide artist. I own Moss Fresno right here. We do the biggest art hop in downtown Fresno. I'm going to start doing stuff back in Pinedale. I'm going to go back to the Boys Club. I'm sobered up. I'm coming back to teach the kids how to paint. I'm the one that painted the murals all in Pinedale. And I'm here to, you know, I'm here to, to stick up for Pinedale. So I'm here in a good way. A hope.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, sir.
My name is, uh, Bob Sandoval. Uh, live at fifteen oh five East McGill, Fresno, California. I am United States Army Veteran, and, uh, my family's been in Pinedale since nineteen thirty. You guys know that veterans sometimes get involved with, with rifles and guns. Do you know what a gun could do to a kid? Running, uh, out there in the, in the, in the, in the, in the way of a robbery? Or in the way of, they say they have armed guards there. How do you know that, they haven't said they used one, but it's going to happen? It will happen, and then what are, what are we going to do? What are you going to tell these people here if you accept that? If you accept having that done, uh, letting them have a, a drugstore in Pinedale? I grew up around drugs, and let me tell you, it's not sweet because part of my family were, got ill, got put in jail, got in real bad trouble about marijuana and drugs. We don't want that in Pinedale. A lot of you guys are, 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 you guys are Mexicans and Orientals and black people. You know about what happens with drugs. So please, don't let this company come into Pinedale. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to the country too. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rachel Chapman. I'm a mother of four. My address is seventy-seven twenty-two North Angus Street. I have been living in, in Pinedale for ten years. I recently moved out, but my kids have found, we have found a church home in Pinedale for the last ten years, and I would never, and I would keep coming back. This is, I love this experience, is showing our kids how to stand up for what's right and teaching them how the right way to live, morals and values. Not all money is good money. Money's the root of all evil. And to stand up for what you believe in, this is a good learning experience for our kids to go about things the right way and to stand up for what you believe in regardless of how smart you are. The battle of David and Goliath, this is it. We're not a hundred-million-dollar company that has this money coming in, but we got the support and we've been there for a hundred years versus a company that's barely celebrated one year. What's more important? We're trying to keep, Pinedale's not the best community, but we're trying, and with this, I just don't see it going in, any way positive. There's so many other places to go. You guys say you're in helping Boys and Girls Clubs. That's in Utah. That's not here. That's everywhere else. What are you guys doing here? And everybody that's for it doesn't even live there. It's not going to affect them directly. We don't want to, to desensitize our kids to this. We're trying to bring them up the best way possible, and let's give them a chance. Let's not, they know, they're going to, everybody's going to know what Embark is, and then our kids are like, oh, this is here. Okay, this is okay. It's not okay. We're trying to teach them how to make good decisions from an early age, and this is the bad example they're setting. the bad example they're setting for the kids to learn.
Thank you. All right, so the next four speakers, we have Bianca Ayoke, Elise Higgs, Luis Brosi, and Paula Chacon.
My name is Bianco Ayoke, and my address is seventy-one seventy-one North Sugar Pine, and I stand here before you today as a veteran, sorry, veteran, make that necessary, as a veteran educator, mother, and parent at students at Pinedale Elementary, and a community member of Pinedale. Pinedale Elementary is not the place for a dispensary. Of all places, why Pinedale? Why pray on this community over and over again? They already, I'm sorry, there are already two dispensaries less than a mile from Pinedale Elementary. What's the need for a third? Want to do something for our community? Build the park, create activities for our kids, donate to our Boys and Girls Club, community centers, sponsor our youth for summer camps, provide adult courses and resources, sponsor my athletes for basketball and volleyball camps? These are the types of opportunities this community needs, not temptation and taking the sense of community away. Pinedale is a very special place, and the people of Pinedale do not want this. And I can stand here and say that a hundred percent of the teachers do not want this. We will stand up for the community and our youth. The backdoor that the armed security, the applicant spoke about earlier today faces my student's front yard where him and his siblings play. The fact that he can say in the future that his neighbor is the dispensary does not sit well with me. Imagine what kind of traffic that this will draw to his family. Dispensaries make a false promises of donations and bettering the community and getting monetary gain, when in the end, they are, make, they are left, allowed to come in and left the community dry. I have seen it happen before. Again, monetary gain is not more valuable than our children. People against it brought their children today. Those for it, well, that speaks for itself. Why didn't they bring their children today? Our kids are here. It is safe to say that all Pinedale teachers oppose this. Pinedale matters, our families matter, most importantly, our children matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, my name is Elise Higgs. I went to Pinedale Elementary and grew up in Pinedale. My family continues to live there to this day. I want you to imagine that you live in Pinedale. Imagine your children go to Pinedale Elementary, which is a three-minute walk to the nearest smoke shop, which may or may not be selling cannabis illegally. Imagine you do your laundry at the local laundromat, the next-door neighbor to Embark, a cannabis dispensary. Imagine you take your children, the smell of cannabis filling their lungs as you walk past security guards armed with pistols. Imagine your family getting dinner from the Little Caesar's on the other side of Embark, and your children begin to cry, their ears ringing from the mosquito alarms, which are designed to cause immense pain. Imagine the unhoused people living near these businesses forced to leave the street, slowly beginning to move towards your home, because Embark prohibits loitering. Imagine your teenager walks to the local donut shop to grab breakfast, and the unthinkable happens. Embark is being robbed, and your child is accidentally shot by security, who will not be held liable for your child's injury or death. Imagine your child is crouched under her desk while the school is on lockdown, this is not a drill. Imagine the product gets in the wrong hand, wrong hands at the wrong time, and somebody accidentally ingests cannabis laced with fentanyl, warranting a visit to the ER, which will cost thousands of dollars because you don't have health insurance. Imagine that no matter what you do to improve your community, no many, how, no matter how many times you ask public officials to stand up for you, companies like Embark, who insist that operating their business in your neighborhood is a privilege, not a right, they do not listen. Instead, they meet your opposition with anger and dismay, subtly threatening you with defamation lawsuits, offering local residents free meals and transportation in order to gain their support, manipulate them into believing that a dispensary will decrease crime and homelessness? They belittle and demean you during community meetings and completely fail to address your concerns in a respectful and diplomatic manner. Imagine this is your reality, and ask yourselves, is this the kind of business you are willing to locate near your children? Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Paula Chacon. I live at three-sixty West Fur Avenue in Pinedale, California, nine-three-six-five-zero. I, it's, I find this whole thing to be a shock and awe. Some of the stuff that I heard felt like a sucker punch to my gut, a slap in the face. I've lived in Pinedale for fourteen years, moved back specifically for my children to go there. My husband is a lifelong Pindalian. His parents have been there all their life, and their grandparents have been there all their life. It's so sad that we have to come here to fight yet again another dispensary trying to go in to where my children live, play, and try to have a happy life. My oldest went to Clovis West, and I'm not sure if you remember, all the swatting halls that they had, so they were constantly on lockdown, constantly on lockdown. It affected them greatly, mentally, physically, emotionally, and that could happen. So all we're doing is asking you, please, 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 think of our children who are here today, and tell them no. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, sir.
My name's Louis Brosi, and I co-own the corner of Minarette's and Blackstone, seven-eleven's the tenant. It's one of only five national tenants in this area, and as planning commissioners, I know you understand the importance of national tenants. You continue to let, like, people in Embark come in, your national tenants will walk away. Seven-eleven's already told us, it's a bad idea. So as planning commissioners, I'm kinda curious, you look at a general plan, and how do you fail to plan and put a dispensary of cannabis two within one mile in the same district? That's poor performance on your part as a planning commission, and our development department. Secondly, let's talk about the opposition today. Lot of people here, the support, we had five Pinedale residents speak out of over twenty-five people, less than four to one. Wow, I'm glad they had found five Pinedale residents to speak in favor of this project. They really did their homework. So as a planning commissioner, I ask you to look at who's here today, look at your growth you need in that part of town, look at national tenants as an asset. I mean, we can hear from their employees and their union reps all day long from Embark. That doesn't put people in your city that will pay your tax revenue and grow your base. That's what you need to look at, because that's your responsibility, that's why you were appointed, and that's why you're up there. Lastly, I'm gonna ask you to look at one more thing. We've heard so much today about Boys and Girls Clubs. Boys and Girls Clubs will only use their money for one thing. I talked to the National Executive Director for drug education programs, that's it, and they get those in school now, they don't need them at the Boys and Girls Club. So you can talk about who they're gonna give money to all day long, the Philip V. Sanchez Foundation Scholarship, that's a lie also. I checked with their executive director. So let's, let's look at Embark and what they've said. Again, they brought five residents up here to talk to you today from Pinedale. That was it. All the rest were union reps, their people or employees. You, as a planning commission, have a responsibility to your community, the people who appointed you, and the people who live in this city. Please execute that responsibility. Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna have the next four individuals, please line up. We have Dan Pantoja, Frank Gonzalez, Oralia Maceda, and Richard Gonzalez. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, sir.
My name is Dan Pantoja, I live at one-fifty-six West Spruce in Pinedale. Say it again, I guess I wrote in my notes. Hello, my name is Coach Dan Pantoja. I am a lifetime Pinedale resident, and employed at Pinedale and Casner Intermediate. My family has lived in Pinedale since the sixties. My family's well-respected and are very active in the community. My parents were pastors in the community since nineteen-seventy-six until twenty-twenty-one, my father passed. I stand here as a voice of our children, who are our future. I've been investing lots of my free time since nineteen-eighty-eight, developing wrestling and mentoring for the youth in Pinedale. And with this program, I've seen so many kids do successful things, and also seen the negative, the kids that made the bad choices, using marijuana and being kicked out of school for their wrong choices. I had to hack a lot of my stuff, because a lot of people already went over it. Marijuana, uh, excuse me, my athletes stand better, a better chance of not doing marijuana if there's no dispensary in Pinedale. I'm also worried about an irresponsible adult purchasing marijuana for an underage student, and now we have another problem. We have come a long way by doing positive things for our youth. This is a step back and a black eye for our community. Built it down the street, away from our community, from school, laundromat, the US Postal Office is right there down the street. They say they're two-hundred feet, two-hundred feet is literally like sixty-six yards, is like a little bit more than half of a football field. I, I spoke to the owner next door to the cannabis and, and Embark on Gettysburg, and I asked her, "How's, how's the business for you?" She goes, "I, you know what, I almost ran out of business. Nobody from that store comes over here and shops over here." Pinedale Association also failed us. They only told the people that were for this. I've been in Pinedale, like I said, my whole life. I only found out this was happening on May twenty-third, when somebody was knocking on my door, talking about there was gonna be some kind of meeting in like three weeks. And so, gotta wrap it up, though?
Yeah, please.
Okay. To wrap it up, do the right thing, build away from our residential homes. Thank you for your time, Pinedale Matters, and Cese puede.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, address, and two minutes.
Frank Gonzalez, seventeen-eighty-seven West Oleander, Fresno. I went to, I went to, I lived in Pinedale. I worked for International Hardware Store. I also was sad when Ronnie's Market closed down. And this has been all lopsided right now, as, as far as I can see. If you wanna call discrimination, this is discrimination. You know, it started from the beginning, when you had all their side come up first, and that is not right. I'm a Vietnam veteran, and you know what? I fought for this country, and it's not correct what you guys are gonna be doing and voting on. It's gotta be from the heart, it always be from the heart, and we have to, as far as the Pinedale folks, we need to be all standing together, because I love this place. And you know what? May the Creator be with you, and then, "Go Eagles!"
Really quickly, Mr. Frank Gonzalez, thank you for your service. By me allowing the individuals to speak first, it's not me discriminating against anyone at all. Me being a Monge person, Southeast Asian in this community, I know what that means. So I don't want anybody to feel that, just because I gave them the opportunity to speak first, it's a procedural. We go through certain procedures that we have to follow, too. So never accuse me, especially me, of discriminating against anyone at all, okay? Thank you, appreciate it. Next individual, name, address, and you have two minutes.
Oralia Maceda, and I speak in Spanish, okay? Mi dirección es ciento quince West Pinedale Avenida. Yo vivo a un bloque de donde quieren poner este negocio. Primeramente quiero decir que el nueve de agosto en la tarde gente del negocio pasó a tocar mi puerta, habló con mis hijos menores de edad, les explicó el proyecto que tienen y les preguntó si estaban a favor. Mis niños para que se retiraran de la casa les dijeron que estaban a favor, y esos datos son los que ellos están utilizando ahorita, y no, y esos no son verdaderos. Lo otro que quiero decir es de que en este centro comercial, este centro comercial es el estacionamiento es muy, es muy reducido, no hay suficiente estacionamiento. Por lo tanto, mi vecina que vive a siete pisos cerca de ahí le ha dicho al dueño que tiene que desalojar la vivienda porque le quieren comprar ese, ese terreno para convertirlo en estacionamiento. Ahí van a desalojar a una familia con tres niños, cuatro, entre todos son siete de la familia que van a tener que hacer, hacer desalojados porque no hay estacionamiento, y esa casa la van a derrumbar para convertirla en estacionamiento, para poder cumplir con las reglas que el negocio necesita. Esto no es posible. No es posible que esta compañía venga a Pinedale a dividirnos. ¿Cómo es posible que estemos peleando? Nosotros que somos vecinos en Pinedale, que nos estemos peleando por culpa de esta compañía. Es momento que ustedes pongan atención y que no sea, es el motivo que nosotros estemos disgustados porque somos vecinos.
Thank you. We're gonna, before you speak, we're gonna have Commissioner Diaz translate that for us.
Muchas gracias por tu comentario. It says that her name is Oralia Maceda. She lives on one-one-five West Pine Avenue. She says that she lives one block away from, from the respective business. She says that on August ninth, in the afternoon, somebody from the, from the company came over to her residence. Her children, minor children, are the ones that answered the door, and the representative asked the minor children if they would support this kind of business. The children were kind of scared, so therefore they were obligated to say yes. With that in mind, she says that she completely disagrees. She loves this, this city, and she doesn't think that this shop is appropriate for their neighborhood. She says that the parking lot that they have is very small, and as a matter of fact, there's a, a family that is rented a residence with three minor children that the landlord has asked to resign or to leave the, the rental property already, because they wanna buy it off to convert it into a parking. So she's saying, "Please do not divide us," that's what she's saying, "do not divide us in Pinedale." So she mentioned that the commissioners, that it is our responsibility to not allow them to be divided. So she opposes.
Thank you for the interpretation. Again, everyone, please be respectful. Allow you guys to do quiet hands, that's perfectly fine, thank you. Name, address, and you have two minutes.
Richard Gonzalez, that was my brother speaking earlier. ninety-three sixty North Blackstone Avenue. We grew up at two-sixty-four and four-sixty-two Beechwood Avenue. I graduated from Pinedale Elementary, Clovis, the old Clovis High School. Nowadays, any of you that drive in that area, you wouldn't even know that you're in Pinedale. They took our water tower and put palm bluffs. River Park has a nice, beautiful river park. I still call it Pinedale. It's always will be Pinedale to me. You know, there's some, there's some parallels here that go on with another company that was marketing a legal drug and made billions of dollars at the expense of five-hundred-thousand lives. That was OxyContin. They had good marketing, they got good sales representatives, they had very good benefits for their employees, but all that had to be taken from them by the federal government because they overstepped the bounds. They stopped telling the truth. It was about making more money. It wasn't about these children, or adults for that matter, it was about money. It's a legal substance. I'm a retired police officer, I worked for thirty-one years, I retired in two thousand and three from the San Jose Police Department. I'm also a veteran like my brother, and I respect the laws. There are laws here that we've all voted on, and those legal substances can be marketed and sold at certain locations, and there are restrictions for them, but you have to be very careful, because you will be responsible if you make the wrong decision. Make the right, right decision for yourself, and do it for these children who do not have a voice.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service to the country. All right, next, I'm gonna go ahead and read another four individuals. We have a Crystal Contreras, Selena Morales, Abel Garcia, and Deborah Bowles. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Crystal Contreras, I live at two-thirty-nine West Bruce Avenue. I'm a lifelong resident of Pinedale. My family has been here for five generations, on my mom's side, four on my dad's side. I'm here today to stand in the gap for my children, my nieces and nephews of the neighborhood, and all the following children that live in that neighborhood. I myself is, am, I was a drug addict at one point in my life. I am fully sober, I'm in school right now as a psychology major, and I'm here to tell you that I'm not against cannabis, as we all know it's legal, I am against the proposed location, because my children do frequent the area that they are requesting, and it's a concern for me that my teenage boys could encounter an armed guard, you know, with the pistol on his hip. I'm not okay with that, one hundred percent I am not okay with that. I think that this is a bad idea, and I think that there is a lot of inconsideration from Embark's end about how we feel and what we stand for. We, we are all here, my sons are here. I'm here teaching them to stand up for something that's right, and when you see something, you say something, and, and you know you stand in the gap for what you And when you see something, you say something and you know you stand in the gap for what you believe in. And I believe that this is not okay and this is not a good decision. So I hope that you guys listen to the voices of the community and not the ones, the few, all the people that they had that are not even, that don't even live here, that don't even reside in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Selena Morales. I'm the fifth generation of my family that lives here in Pinedale. I attend Pinedale School and I am 10 years old, going into the fifth grade. To me, it's not okay that the dispensary is coming here. And it's by our school. And if an accident was to happen, our school would go on lockdown. It's very scary for all the other kids that are younger and don't understand what's going on. I know some kids like me, we all like eating pizza and if we go to Little Caesar's, we do not wanna be around the dispensary that might be there. There's homes in Pinedale here that are close to where the dispensary might be. There's a house 172 feet away for where Embark's trying to put their dispensary and it's scary and their kids are probably scared too. Thank you.
Ms. Selena, you're a very bright individual. Stay in school, okay? Your handwriting is better than a lot of these people here, so. Just as guilty.
Greetings, Planning Commission. My name is Abel Garcia, 5661 Mustang Avenue, Clovis, California. I attended Pinedale Elementary. In fact, I attended it when it was the Pinedale Pioneers. So it tells you how far back I go there. I'm hearing a lot from, and obviously I'm opposed to Embark or any dispensary for that. I'm hearing a lot of tax revenues and I know that's the big one. I know you guys wanna put two of them in every seven districts that we have. You're seeing the tax money, you're hearing about the jobs that they're gonna be bringing, you're hearing about their so-called community support, but all I see are lies. I was looking at a study just the other day done by the University of Colorado Post-Hoc four years after they were approved in 2014. What the dispensary won't mention, but what the studies do show, is an increase in crime rate. Looking at cities with at least one or more dispensaries, increase in crime rate between 26% up to 1,400% in crimes. The study's out there. Do your homework. It's there. Increase in traffic accidents. Increase in traffic fatalities. Most of these dispensaries become targets themselves. Who are they gonna call? They're gonna call the police department. You're looking at a number of the tax revenue while it's going right back into helping support keep their lights on. Look, this is my family, right in front of you. I have five children. It is not easy being a father today. The decisions you guys make, these are the seeds that you're planting that are gonna affect my children, your children. This is our community.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Hi, Deborah Bowles. I'm the principal of Pinedale for the past 12 years, 7171 North Sugar Pine. I just want you to take a look out in the audience at the beautiful faces of our children, one of whom spoke today, Selena, great job. They represent Pinedale Elementary, Casner Intermediate, and Clovis West High School. And they are who matters in this. It's the children. It's not, you know, it's not about cannabis use, we know it's legal. It's not about people's character, although that's the false narrative that's being played out. And that's just not the case. I've met with them at a request because I was not contacted in the three years that any of this was going on. And then we're the hub of the community, the school is. My stance has never changed. It's simply about location. And as principal of Pinedale, I see firsthand every day the perceptions that people have about Pinedale. It's full of drug users, it's gangs. People in other communities judge our children. Whether people wanna admit that or not, they do. Because I am the one that experiences that when we have parents that don't want to bring their kids to Pinedale because of the children of Pinedale. So it is personal for me. Stop putting things that make that perception continue. I stood here before city council a year and a half ago to say, help us. Help our community, uplift us, we need your support. We have been a community for 100 years. It's not a community of bullies. We're rich in love. We are rich in love. And it's not bullying, it's passion. Passion for the children who deserve so much more than the things that are being brought around them to keep them down. My final thing I just wanna say is, you know, think about if this dispensary was going into your backyard, it just wouldn't happen. And I'm tired of businesses taking advantage of poor communities. We are not poor, we are rich in love, as I said. And please put our children before big business and profits. It can go anywhere else in District 2. Keep it in industrial areas and do not put it in communities and especially not residential neighborhoods. It breaks my heart to know some of my children have had to experience people coming to their door and being intimidated to have to say yes to something that they don't even understand. And that's happened, believe it or not. I speak to community members. They talk to me, they trust.
Let's go ahead and wrap it up, please.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't even hear the bell cuz I'm just so upset that it's my third time doing this. When does it stop? When does it stop?
You're fine. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and name four more. We have a Eric Swain, Mei Mua, Kristen Belknap, and a Richard Amparano.
Commissioner Vang, Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity. My name's Eric Swain. I'm the principal of Clovis West High School, 1798 North Orangewood. What I appreciate watching this tonight is your kids, what high-character kids. You pay attention, you listen. I've tried to listen to this and I see a lot of people in here paying attention and other people simply just on their computers. I will tell you that there's 300-plus kids that go to Clovis West from the Pinedale community. They are my responsibility from the time they leave school till the time they get home. We have a late bus that leaves our campus at 5:50. So if peak hours or after-school hours, that doesn't mean kids aren't still coming home from school. I was privileged enough this last spring to be part of the Pinedale Centennial Parade. We had our cheerleaders there, our auto program, our folklorico, and it was so cool to be invested in the community. And I looked around and the families, the generations, and what kills me right now is it seems like this neighborhood's being torn apart. But these are all my kids. It doesn't matter if you're for or against. Doc Buchanan started our district. And a couple things, our schools are never gonna have fences, never gonna have gates. They were supposed to be there for the community to enjoy, okay? Second, Doc B, our gang programs, our drug prevention, was after-school programs. And now with this coming in, potentially opening those doors, not saying that it's legal, but common sense, 800 feet or 1,000, there's still kids in those areas. They're still from kindergarten through 12th grade. A couple hundred feet doesn't make a difference. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Mei Mua, 76, 76 North First Street. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Mei Mua, middle school principal at Casner Intermediate with Clovis Unified School District. Today I stand before you to share my strong belief against the establishment of a cannabis dispensary in close proximity to Pinedale Elementary and community and along the very path our children walk every single day. First and foremost, we must consider the impact on our youth. Our children are the future of this community and we have a moral obligation to provide them with a safe and nurturing environment. We cannot ignore the potential for increased exposure and access to substances that can have detrimental effects on their developing minds. Secondly, we work tirelessly to maintain the safety of our students and school community. Introducing a dispensary in the Pinedale community could jeopardize our school's science efforts and expose our young students at the middle school to unnecessary risks. Students who live in the Pinedale community feed into Casner Intermediate School and utilize the bus drop-off and pickup areas in Pinedale. The proximity and potential accessibility to the cannabis dispensary to our students is detriment to the success of our students and our school. Placing the dispensary along the walkway to school raises serious safety concerns. Children's are inherently curious and the presence of such an establishment could attract unwelcome attention. We must think about the potential for loitering, congestion, and increased foot trapping in that area, which should be calm and secure. I actually did a quick Google search to answer the question about when are the peak hours. Based off of Google research or search, it says the all Embark location, their peak hours are actually from 12:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. That's exactly during the school hours of 8:00 to 3:30 p.m. Not to mention, our kids get dropped off at Pinedale Community from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. during every single day. So while some might argue for the normalization of cannabis, please understand that this will actually be more harm to our students than anything else. We should always, we should not be swayed by solely the current trend without thoroughly evaluating the potential consequences for our students in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Dr. Kristen Belknap, Assistant Superintendent in Clovis Unified School District, overseeing the Clovis West area, 1450 Herndon. I am here tonight to express Clovis Unified's strong opposition to the location of the proposed cannabis facility near Pinedale Elementary School, located at 7363 North Blackstone Avenue within the city of Fresno's Second Council District. Our objection stems specifically from the proximity of this proposed location to our Pinedale Elementary School. City Code states that cannabis retail businesses shall not locate closer than 800 feet from any property, boundary, location, or house that cares for students, including K-12 students. While I realize that this facility is slightly outside of the 800-foot minimum, we also recognize that this was only setting a minimum distance per code and that cities should consider these on a case-by-case basis. We believe that skirting the edge of this minimum is unreasonable and just not good for the kids. Clovis Unified strongly believes that the facility's proximity to an educational institution could have detrimental effects on students, the school, and the overwhelming being of the neighborhood. Pinedale Elementary School is not only a transitional kindergarten through sixth-grade elementary campus, but a transportation hub for our secondary students in grades 7 through 12 that live in the neighborhood. Every morning and afternoon, many middle school and high school students would pass by the proposed location either on their way to school or when returning from school and sports in the afternoon and evening. The proximity of this location would make it nearly impossible for our young secondary students to avoid the distractions and risks presented by a cannabis retailer and which we believe is the motivation for the 800-foot minimum parameter in the first place. To not object to the location of this retailer would be contrary to our core value of student safety. The potential impacts of this cannabis dispensary for our students raise significant concerns for CUSD. Such facilities may attract undesirable activities and will increase traffic around the surrounding areas, thus creating heightened stress and anxiety among residents and children. There are various other suitable locations to be considered away from Pinedale Elementary School and our students. As responsible city leaders, I trust you will carefully consider the long-term implications of the proposed zoning and act in the best interest of all of our citizens, most importantly, our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Richard Amparano, 7361 North San Pablo, Pinedale, California. I am a senior pastor in Pinedale for 23 years. And this morning, I decided to take a walk from the back of the proposed location, which by the way, will be where they will load up large amounts of cannabis into the store and they will also load their five delivery trucks, lots of cannabis, into those trucks. So I walked from there to the nearest home that houses three children. It took me 25 seconds and I'm an old man, 67 years old. So that said, I'd like to share with you an article that I read. On November 17th, 2021, in the afternoon, 12:11 in the afternoon, in Martinez, California, an Embark driver was robbed by three masked men. Two suspects were armed with semi-automatic handguns. The suspects fled the scene in a newer model black Honda sedan after taking large amounts of cannabis and the driver's personal belongings. According to AAGES, the security company that Embark has contracted with, their security guards can and well use their firearms. In other words, they are authorized to use deadly force. The reason the city of Fresno requires dispensaries to have armed guards is that they are expecting trouble. This nuisance is unacceptable this close in our community. Embark will have five delivery drivers parked in the back of the proposed location. It is not a stretch to believe that there is the possibility that thugs with superior numbers and semi-automatic firearms would rob a driver as they are being loaded. Are we to expect a shootout mere seconds from a home with three children and their escape route is immediately into Pinedale proper?
Thank you, sir. All right, next, we're gonna have Susan Brose, Linda Guzman, Christina Miller, Jamie Licon, and a Ron Vega.
I'm Susan Brose and my concern is that the children of the Pinedale community are the priority of this issue. Cannabis is restricted to 18 years of age with medical doctors' prescriptions. 21 and over can purchase at will. I am not in opposition to cannabis. I am in opposition to the location. I am the property owner of 7314 North Blackstone. Bought the property in 1970. Prior to that, my husband ran a fishing bait and tackle shop. I wanted you to understand that this neighborhood notification that I received regarding the meeting that was coming up after June 13th was for me, and I've already spoken with the young man, Mr. Holt, about how this process works. And he's going to help me understand so that I can be aware of what's happening a lot sooner than at the very end of everything. The strip mall where Embark wants to open has four different prepared food restaurants. The Pinedale community, the adults as well as the children are steady customers to these establishments. The laundromat is in continuous use by the Pinedale families. There is a safety component to the location that Embark has chosen. I do understand the need for to have safety. Security is essential to control. This is not the neighborhood for cannabis. 81 Pinedale Street, east of Blackstone, could be a benign location with little pedestrian traffic. Thank you for allowing me to voice my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Please state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Christina Miller. I live at 7060 North San Pablo in Pinedale. I'm a third generation with my children being a fourth generation living in the Pinedale community. I'm also an employee of Clovis Unified and I am not for this. I am against Embark. I was never notified. I've never heard anything from them, nor have I bullied anybody in the community. And so, I stand here as a Pinedale resident, I'm against it and I think it would be detrimental to our community and to our children. Thank you.
My name is Jamie LaCon and I live at 7342 North San Pablo. And all three of my children attended Pinedale Schools and graduated from Clovis West. And I also think this will be detrimental for our community, so I am being a voice for our community and our children and I say no to Embark.
Thank you, Ms.
Good evening, thank you so much. This is a really long evening, I appreciate all of you. My name's Linda Guzman. I live at 1355 West Sierra, sorry. I grew up in Pinedale, working at my mom and dad's hardware store, National Hardware. I'm in support of every legal business. I'm not in support, I'm vehemently opposing any dispensary in Pinedale. I've heard a lot about how they followed whatever code ordinance, they've jumped through hoops and I respect that. That's a lot of money and a lot of work. But this is a unique situation and I'm asking you to consider the human element. As David Kreiner, sorry, I don't know what to call you, Commissioner, you brought up the children and I'm gonna ask you, how much is a child's life worth? the children, and I'm going to ask you, how much is a child's life worth? Will you bring in the human element, not the code? I know you're a planning commissioner and you're a developer, not the code, but human, the human element here. We have excessive car traffic that will be in that area. Just so, there are only 29 stalls for six businesses. There will be, and that's not even including employee and deliveries, there will be traffic going into residential. I observed just one hour of Embark over at Gettysburg, 106 people in, 100 out. 106 in, that was 8:18 p.m. to 9:20 p.m. last night, and I saw Dodge Chargers with a rumbling, rumble away, and with loud stereos coming up and people beeping, you know, they're locking their doors and beeping. I'm like, wow, how is this not a noise, a nuisance for local, for residential areas, residents that are so close? And how is it that cars are not going to go through Pine Dell Residential as they leave Embark? Who is going to go on Blackstone? When I went over to Embark, I went into residential. Who's going to go 25 miles per hour? I had to watch myself. I did, anyway. So thank you for considering the human element here.
Thank you, Ms.
Hello, Board. My name is Ron Vega. I live at 51 West Minaretts in Pine Dell. I am a real estate investor. I represent myself and my family's interests. We have homes from Fresno State to the West Bluffs. I'm probably the only landlord that lives in Pine Dell that has eight properties in Pine Dell, with three of those properties, actually four, are within 500 feet of the dispensary. At no time has Embark ever knocked on my door. I want to bring you an ad, show you an ad that shows here after their celebration. One year of getting Fresno high, not providing cannabis, getting Fresno high. You know, a year later, are we going to see that? One year of getting Pine Dell high? Is that's what's going to happen to us? You know, I don't, I oppose the dispensary. Having a dispensary is not scary to our community, as Embark has said, it can be scary. No, we understand what it is. Gang-related shootings, drug addicts found dead are scary to the people of Pine Dell. I'm a retired captain with the Fresno County Sheriff's Office. I already look at the area and see the nuisance it is. We're not saying when Embark comes in, they will create a nuisance and violate one of the sections. That area is already a nuisance. The City of Fresno has done very well to, to work with, to work in gating up that area, putting fences around there, trying to clean it up with, through code enforcement. However, people will not drive on Pine Dell and Blackstone and park their cars on Pine Dell and go use that and leave them empty like that. People work on their cars there. People are using drugs there. You cannot leave your car on Pine Dell Avenue by yourself, you know, by itself and go into any of the stores. That would be ridiculous. You would come out to something that's not going to be good for you. Okay, I would say that Embark itself, they receive fake news if they think that we are just going to roll over. Pine Dell community was Pine Dell. We became part of Fresno in 1980. We were annexed, hoping that the dreams would be good. That's why we don't act like the rest of Fresno. We don't act like Gettysburg did. We were annexed. And thinking annexed, we think that the City of Fresno will be responsible to us and our needs. You know, I currently am community leader. I work, I am part member of Pine Dell Matters. I believe that I am still the treasurer of the Pine Dell Community Association, because I've never been told otherwise. If you ask me, they are a defunct agency, a defunct nonprofit that has not had any meetings to advise the community. Their status currently-
Please, please wrap it up, sir.
They have poor status right now with the California state tax board. And I will tell you that looking at this, when you talk about security officers, they are not peace officers. A lot of people think having security is going to make the area safer. I was a peace officer. They're not peace officers.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so that's all the cards I've had. So do we have any other individuals who would like to speak in opposition? If so, please make a line. When you approach a podium, please state your name, address, and you have two minutes, please.
My name is Ron Montoya. I live on 1049 North Poplar. I was here a year and a half ago, and City Council denied it, and I appreciate that. I didn't question marijuana, you know. Tupac was right. Everybody's black and white smoking crack tonight. Thing is, it's the system inequalities, the gentrification. Why not 800 feet away from Forkner Elementary School? Why not 800 feet from Buller Talent? Why not in Fig Garden Village? Why not from, why not next to the People's Church? I can tell you why the application or the site was denied on 1784 West Shaw, because it's less than a quarter of a mile from Venice. This is your Chavez Ravine City of Fresno. They've been bullied. And I hope that all the young kids here, Google Chavez Ravine. I'm not a big fan of the Dodgers, okay? This is, we're all being blindsided, we're all being duped. Embark doesn't have constitutional capability of telling the truth. As pointed out in their presentation, there wasn't anything organic. Embark couldn't even present the peak times. Thank you, Mr. Kreiner, for pointing that out. Thank you, Mr. Vang, for pointing out what I think you were trying to point out is, maybe my point, why not over here? Why not Fig Garden Village? There's a perfect Citibank that's closed, a couple of bars there, why not? Nobody's opposed of that. They're opposed of targeting Hispanic people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Virginia Mesa, address is 7396 North College, Pine Dell, 93650. I did submit something online, but I just wanted everybody to hear. Embark has said they've been working on this for five years. The last time I heard, it was Cookies, who we were here fighting for, against, it was on Minaretts and Blackstone. Five years ago, it was their proposed location on Shaw, not this location. We were notified of this location when City posted it on their website, saying, "This is the new location," and it's the Pine Dell community. That's when I found out. Yes, I spoke to one of the people here. They were knocking on doors. Yes, I explained, "We already have a dispensary. It's on Palm and Nease, called the Artist's Tree." They had a 420 party, big party, block, marijuana, everything, goodies, no goodies, everything. We have something. So it's not that we're opposed to that use, we're opposed to the location. The location that they are using, yes, they have used five years, but the five years, have it been that location? No. I knew of the location barely when you guys posted it on your website. Another thing, the Little Caesars, yes, it's really close. We have a Boys and Girls Club. Hopefully, they're not accepting any donations. Pine Dell is not for sale. Pine Dell is here, we're going to stay here. And you know what? If other Boys and Girls Club accept their donations, that's good on them, but not ours. This location is literally six minutes from walking distance from Pine Dell Elementary. I've been in this community 18-years. My oldest is in Fresno State right now, third year in Fresno State. She went to Pine Dell since preschool, preschool. And you go walking from the same school to Boys and Girls Club, that takes them 10 minutes. How is that possible that our children have a six-minute walk to this place instead of going to a place that they say they secure and promote commitment? I really hope they would have been here and say, "We do not accept any donations. Pine Dell is not for sale."
Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Ernestine Martinez, and I've been a lifelong resident of Pine Dell. All the kids that I had are all grown, so am my grandma. But my concern is that location, terrible place. It's always full of people because they go to the laundromat, or they go to Taco Grande, or they go to the donut store, or they go to the Chinese store. So it's always busy there, always, always. And no matter what time it is, it's busy, and there's not enough parking. And that place they want is so small, I don't know how they, I don't know how they would do it. But I know there's families right next to it. So to me, it's terrible. I'm not opposed to the cannabis, I'm telling you. I'm opposed to the location and where all the activity is, kids going, running up and down, getting their donuts before they go to school. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is JJ Velasco, and I'm a, I'm a Pine Dalian. I'm from Pine Dell. I grew up in Pine Dell. My address is 1196 West Pine Dell Avenue, Fresno, California, but the zip code is 93650 I grew up in the community of Pine Dell since I was a child. I went to college, I played football in college, high school, and I played five years of semi-pro. That's not important. What is important is Pine Dell matters. Pine Dell matters. And I'm going to read a law or something. A research states that dispensaries located and close to schools have a negative effect on students' success rates. Data collected in Colorado cities in Los Angeles indicates, throughout, may be a medical benefit for some, they saw increases in neighborhood crime, robbery, aggravated assault, drug, and school alcohol offenses. Youth experience negative consequences increased the risk of mental and physical health. So now that we know that, it is not a positive choice for our youth or young adults. I just wanted to share that with you. I really want you to consider. I'm not against businesses or this business, but I am against, as a young child, somebody that was productive because of a lot of community people that you have in this hall is what made us successful, what made us young kids want to be, want to belong. We don't need a place that is going to bring all the negativism. And lastly, I just want to thank you for your time and just hear us out, and there were some great speakers and some great topics, so give us an opportunity to make a difference and plant that seed and make a difference in our lives, just as well with the kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
My name is Julian Chacon. I live at 360 Westford Avenue. I am Pine Dell, Casner, and Clovis West alumni. In March of this year, we celebrated our 100th birthday. Our theme was "Family, Friendship, and Community," because that is what defines us. We are a hard-working, blue-collar community made up mostly of people of different ethnicities and races. We are passionate about life and our love for children, just as you do. We hold our heads high and have pride in our community, despite stigmas and stereotypes and sometimes outright cruelty from other people around Fresno. We are strong, resilient, and determined people who are constantly trying to better our community. Having to battle a third dispensary, wanting to dig its claws into our neighborhood, is a distracting waste of time, energy, and resources. Instead, we could be planning more community events like the Centennial, which was a huge success. We have no time for offense because we're constantly on defense. We are no stranger to big businesses encroaching on our neighborhood. Year after year, we feel the walls of Fresno closing in. It is appalling that the city even allows smoke shops and liquor stores across from our elementary schools. Whose voice matters for the future of Fresno communities? Out-of-towners trying to make a dollar, or the generations of residents? What matters to the City of Fresno? Pine Dell children matter. Pine Dell families matter. And another point I would like to add on is, Mr. Kreiner asked them, how much, how far was the other dispensary location from sensitive residents, like a school or something? And they said they stopped measuring after 1,000 feet. Well, I'd like to point out that the one to Pine Dell, the elementary, is only 1,040 feet, so to really just stop measuring, stop measuring just after just barely passing that 1,000-feet threshold is really just kind of insensitive to the other location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mitch Wall. My address is 5932 East Montecito in Fresno. I'm not a Pine Dell resident, but I married into a Pine Dell family that has been there for 70 years. I just want to point out what is obvious to you, what is obvious to all of us tonight, that what you have experienced is, on the one side, the heart cry of a 100-year-old community for its children, and honestly, on the other side, a heartless, sterile financial calculation.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and, okay. If anybody else wants to speak in opposition, please make a formal line.
Hi, my name is Conchita Belmonte. I live at 391 West Spruce Avenue in Pine Dell. I grew up in Pine Dell. My children are being raised in Pine Dell, and Embark is not our lifestyle. That is not what I'm teaching my kids to be. And I am speaking for the voiceless, all the children that I'm surrounded by each and every single day. I am an employee of Clovis Unified, and I feel like I am constantly having to explain myself and attempting to change the perception of how a lot of people in our community and outside of the community view some of our children and our families that live within the Pine Dell community. I also want to say that I don't want to have to drive my kids to that shopping center and have to explain why there's guards out there. I feel like that's something that I shouldn't have to do. Children's lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and let's go to Zoom. Ms. Janice, do we have any individuals with their hand raised?
No hands at this time.
Okay. Looks like everyone seemed to be in here, right?
Yes, sir.
We're going to go ahead and allow the applicant. If you can, if we're going to, if you can address some of these concerns, but let's try to be respectful of time, too, please. Okay. Thank you.
It's been a long night, so thank you for this opportunity to provide some final thoughts. I want to start by acknowledging the sincerity of the folks who both support and oppose this project. This spirited debate is a fundamental part of any process, and regardless of how one feels about our project, it is important that every voice is heard. Cheering, prior to providing our rebuttal, I just wanted to check, is it possible to understand from the city attorney, like, where I can weigh in? I just, a lot of things were said tonight, and I don't know to what extent you all would like me to be responsive to those claims. So I think specifically, you know, concerns about the legal retail cannabis policy in Fresno is a question for the city council and the mayor. You know, do you want me to be responsive sort of individually or within the four corners of the appeals?
Yeah, I think it's important to focus on the conditional use permit findings-
Okay.
-in those permits.
Okay. I may jump around my notes a little bit then, so bear with me. Thank you. So obviously, I want to again thank the City of Fresno and the more than two dozen departments, along with many, many staff members, for their exhaustive multi-year review process, both of us as operators and of our project. The issuance of our conditional use permit is a testament to their diligent work, the work our team has undertaken, and the support these efforts have generated over the course of a number of years. I want to assure you that we are motivated to be a reliable partner that benefits the community and have a demonstrated track record of doing just that with our existing operations on Blackstone and at the other locations where we operate throughout California. There is simply no business reason for us to do anything other than succeed for the benefit and not the detriment of the community we serve. Cannabis businesses are the most regulated businesses of any type in this, I'm sorry, the most regulated business type of any in the City of Fresno. Unlike other businesses, Embark goes through a rigorous annual review process administered by the city to validate that the business is complying with all conditions of approval and with the promises we have made. As such, my promise, and to any of those who are concerned about how the business will operate, is that this will be annually audited by the city. Put more simply, we either do what we say we will do, or we will lose the ability to operate this business. There are approximately 3,000 residents of Pine Dell and nearly 70,000 residents of District 2. Our team has knocked on doors over the course of a number of months and spoken with hundreds of Pine Dell residents, many of whom have expressed an openness to our proposed operations. The map we provided affirms that assertion. That is objective. As we explained, or as was explained by a few residents and businesses during public comment, the reality is that many do not feel comfortable speaking tonight in the face of this intensity, given that they are all Pine Dell neighborhood, neighbors and in one neighborhood. That is not a personal attack. It is just reality. I understand why folks are feeling uncomfortable, but these sentiments are not representative of many of the conversations- but these sentiments are not representative of many of the conversations we've had and they cannot just be painted as the truth. If we did not receive the overwhelming support we did during our listening tour, we would not be standing before you today and we'd not be able to provide the map we provided, including from within Pinedale. Ultimately, the city developed a deliberative process that we have followed in every way. As I have stated throughout our proposal, our project was reviewed by independent experts, dozens of local and county departments and agencies and senior staff from the city manager's office. It is found to be compliant in all ways. Further, as was detailed in our presentation, or I'm sorry, in their presentation tonight, city staff has demonstrated that the appeals do not have merit and has such recommended the denial of these appeals. Our team has engaged with the opponents and has affirmed time and time again that we will continue to do so. But you did hear from Pinedale residents in support of our project today and you saw hundreds of them whose doors were knocked on, discussions were had and who signed in support. Hence the map we provided. We need to stop calling these lies simply because not everyone shares the same perspective. I wanna just briefly touch on a few things that were said because I think it's important to set the record straight. I do not make $100 million a year. I have not purchased or sought to purchase a single property in Pinedale to take over a house or anything else, and if I had, that would be a matter of public record. I have not provided a dollar to anyone in support of our project. I stayed for over an hour after our community meeting, not to belittle, but to directly respond to specific questions. I have never threatened a lawsuit. In fact, we did not even provide a legal response to the appeals, but rather chose to simply present to you today. And to be clear, our staff was never robbed in the city of Martinez. Our security team in Martinez is unarmed, is not authorized to use deadly force. And furthermore, our security protocol has completely disarmed an effort that was made to impede those operations. It is a testament to how we operate that we were successful in doing so. And I will also mention, we do not offer delivery services today, so no cars will be parked outside our facility for those purposes. And this is the challenge I have suggested. The facts are simply not being represented here. What I have done is what I will continue to do. Be accessible, transparent and focused on delivering on the promises I have made to this community. We are also committed to doing what our existing business has done, creating no negative impacts on youth, our neighbors or the community at large. I am very sensitive to concerns about youth. We all would be. But the reality is that this location is outside of the buffer zone for the school and not along a safe route to school as defined by the city of Fresno. We are nevertheless committed to ensuring a benign exterior, no youth access, rigorous security and access protocols and ensuring that vehicular traffic has no impact on youth's school travel times. And to be very clear, our peak hours on Blackstone are in the evenings as evidenced by both the staffing numbers of who we employ and the sales data we have collected over well more than a year now. This has been cast as a quality of life issue and yet many of our surrounding neighbors have provided you with letters indicating that they clearly support our business because it will enhance just that. Just because you don't agree with that doesn't mean that it isn't true. But opinions are not facts and that is the point I am making. This has become about who said what and how they said it. Our map is objective. It is reflective of the signatures we have gathered. There are no lies there and certainly no children who have signed these petitions. Our proposal has been designed to ensure we are, sorry. Our proposal has been designed to ensure we are able to open and initiate operations quickly, a clear priority as defined by the city council and city manager's office and as discussed in multiple city council hearings this year. As one of only two operational businesses today, we've demonstrated our commitment to this community, a commitment we are seeking to continue to do here. Our existing operations have proven to create no public health and safety nuisances, no adverse impacts on the neighborhood, have provided no youth with access to cannabis and have instead resulted in tangible benefits. We've had no shootings, no lockdowns, no threats to safety or otherwise. These are fears and I want to be very clear that I hear them and I respect them. I do not belittle them. But ultimately, our track record has affirmed that these fears are not founded in the reality of our existing and proven operations. We've proposed to operate a retail business in a compliantly zoned retail corridor that meets all municipal requirements. We have stood stoic in the face of accusations, confident in the understanding that we have and will continue to engage transparently, authentically and in partnership. We've been told we need to have Pinedale residents at the helm of our decision-making. The truth is, in many ways, we have. We invited a member of the Pinedale community onto our volunteer community advisory board and it is his feedback that ensures our existing operations in Blackstone have no adverse impacts here. We have met Pinedale residents who then walked door to door with team members from EMBARK. These Pinedale residents are at the helm of our approach with us and not because they are paid, but because they believe in this opportunity for ongoing community partnership. The reality is that tonight is not about support or opposition to cannabis and I appreciate that many folks have acknowledged that. Good people can agree or disagree with that issue. Tonight is about choosing legal licensed retail cannabis or allowing unlicensed illicit operators to continue targeting low-income communities throughout Fresno, including in Pinedale. Drugs are being sold to kids in Pinedale tonight, but not by compliant operators who create revenue for the city and operate under the strictest regulations of any business type in Fresno. My hope is that we can move forward tonight and begin a partnership to close down the illegal operators selling drugs in this neighborhood. We are committed to that effort and have already initiated action in partnership with a number of local residents and relevant stakeholders in the room tonight to do just that. I, alongside other members of our team, have provided our direct cell phone numbers during our community meeting, on distributed materials and has been used to communicate with the appellants. I remain open to continued dialogue for the lifetime of the business and believe strongly that the opponents can serve as partners in holding our business accountable once operational. That is a commitment I have made to you tonight on the record. The reality is, what has been shared tonight is largely a dislike for me or assertions about our team or about the tone or tenor of our outreach. But not liking me or this location are not actually within the parameters of these appeals. Hypothetical what-ifs should not undermine the specific requirements created by the city for these businesses. This discussion is about the components of the filed appeals and the city presented clear and objective facts that demonstrate the challenges to the city's findings do not have merit. As staff has indicated, the location we have selected is in total compliance with buffer zones, exceeding the local mandate by more than 20% and the state mandate by more than 40%. Armed guards are a requirement of the city, not of EMBARK. Both city staff and an independent traffic expert assessed parking standards and traffic and conducted a traffic generation analysis and found that our project is in full compliance, has more parking than is required and exceeds all requirements placed upon this business type. Assurations that this will impact traffic do not represent these independent analyses by experts specifically designed to study these things. Pinedale does matter. You will never find me arguing that in any capacity. But so does the truth and we have worked extensively to ensure full compliance with the rules governing our operations and we have engaged in the outreach to affirm that commitment. Again, I wanna thank the city for issuing our conditional use permit, for a thorough staff report tonight and for their recommendation to uphold the issuance of our permit given our full compliance and demonstrated track record of going above and beyond all requirements placed upon our business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and, we have any comments or questions for the applicant? Let's see, okay. We're gonna go ahead and close all public comments. We'll bring this back to the commission. What I wanna do before we make any motion, I want every single commissioner to speak. Okay. And if it's okay, we're gonna start from the right to the left. Commissioner Lade.
I, I love Pinedale. You guys are beautiful and I think this is wonderful. You're doing everything that you can to teach your children to stand up for what they believe in. And this is exactly what community is about. There are educators here who have devoted their lives so that these children have a voice. And I understand that you want more information, more communication and I don't know if that has been there. Granted, there's only a hundred foot radius, but it involves so many more people than that. So I do understand where you're coming from. And you guys are also a little bit more vulnerable of a community because, I mean, you're surrounded by Blackstone, Herndon, Palm, these so many high-traffic streets by your community. So my heart does go out to you and I just really hope that you can focus on what matters, which is your community and not having so much tension in your community and sharing that love for one another, whether you believe in the same thing or not.
Commissioner Hardy.
Thank you. You know, this is a tough one because I do think the applicant did a good job on their due diligence and we do have ordinances that created that, but I also am having a hard time because based off the testimony, I do think there could be a detriment to the neighborhood with being close to the school. And I'm kinda torn here, kinda weighing out our options because we do have a tough job up here. We have to have some good findings and I'm gonna see what my colleagues want to do and see if they have colleagues, but I am torn because I do think the applicant is following the law, staying within the required area, which is allowed by city council and everybody had an opportunity to vote at that time and, and, and weigh in on these conversations. Also, I mean, I've been on this board for many years and I haven't seen this many neighborhood opposition come in. So, and, and not only just the opposition, it's more of, I see the school folks in here and we value that as a community also. And so I'm gonna sit here and try to think about how to weigh our findings and follow the law and I'll adhere to you guys.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and Commissioner Bray, we'll start with you and then we'll bring it back.
Well, I'm speaking to you as a white lady and, in case you didn't notice. And also, I'm a past chair of the Chamber of Commerce, so I understand a business perspective on things and, and how important it is to support businesses. I, I also think that when we talk about minimum distances from schools, what we need to be talking about is maximum benefit to our children. I'm a grandma and a mother. And so I believe that although the code allows this in that location, I believe it's too close to the school and I believe that we cannot make finding C. I believe it is detrimental to the community and so I will be voting no.
Commissioner Kreiner.
Thank you, brother chair. I'm a black man, since you said it. And when, to add a little, to add a little humor, when our chair told, told this, this community to, to do this, you know, if you go to a black church, that looks like everything we do on a Sunday morning anyway. But I will share the sentiments of, of my commissioner Brad as he gave kudos to applicant for the time that you, you spent. Hold on, calm down. Because I believe you, you give honor where honor is due for the time that you spent in, in preparing your presentation and the time that you gave to the community. Well, at the same time, I give props and praise to this community because as our commission just got through saying, you don't see this too often. And in light of that, Ms. Selena, I wanna honor you because it takes a lot for a 10-year-old to stand up here and speak with such professionalism and such amazing oratorical skill. So we honor you and we honor the, the, the school. I don't know how you're gonna make it to school in the morning, dear. I have no idea how you're gonna do that. And I hope they give you an A just because you're out here past your bedtime hour of eight o'clock. But yeah, this is, this is interesting because I do believe and do feel that there is a detriment to the community. And not coming from a biased perspective as a father, but more so coming from what I'm reading and what I'm seeing. There is a law that is, that is ordinance that is placed. But at the same time, I think we also have to look at how that affects community and how that affects people. And though I wish that there was even more opportunity for better communication that could be made between both applicant and community, I think we're past that. And so as my commissioner Brad said, we'll make a decision individually, but that decision will be collectively. But I too believe that there is some detriment that could be done to this community.
Thank you all for being here and I do identify myself as a brown woman. And, and as a business owner myself, I am torn on this. I really am because I can sympathize with everybody. I am a mother and a grandmother and, and definitely I, I can see the human aspect of it, the human element. However, I feel like all of us are kind of left making a decision that perhaps should have been made before writing the requirements of the licenses. Whoever came out with a thousand feet, you know, we are left with the decisions. The applicant, you did a phenomenal job. I love your business plan. I love everything that you brought. I love how you explained it very thoroughly. And I was so, when you were speaking, I said she has covered everything. There's nothing that anybody can come and say that she's not doing right. I mean, she's an entrepreneur. She's a young entrepreneur and we should be supporting economic development and that is one of them. You know, sales tax, property tax, everything that she brings to the Pinedale community is wonderful. She crossed all her Ts and dotted all the Is that everybody said that she needed to have. I mean, she did. And, and I am left here because as a business person, definitely, you know, I think our city needs this. You know, our sales tax and everything else. But listening to all of you, I cannot avoid thinking that I am not aware that it's gonna affect the whole community too. So this is a tough one for all of us. But we'll do whatever we can our best. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I don't, I don't see color, but I do stop at traffic lights.
I'd like to interrupt for just a moment. I wanna nominate. Chair Vang is the best chair we've ever had.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. But, me too. You know, I'm very conflicted with it. I think it's very empowering to see such a young woman do such a really good job in regards to your due diligence. I believe in small business. I sympathize with your effort and I believe you have really good intentions to beautify the community itself, right? But I think once the previous identified area didn't fall through, I believe that maybe you knew that when you set this place up over here, you would run into a big old issue too. Okay. And it's hard for me just because when I'm keeping track of all these carbs, okay? Just to kinda give you an idea, what I did was I went ahead and organized into three different sections, okay? And those who were in support, I have this whole stack, okay? But those individuals from Pinedale just makes up of this stack. Those individuals who spoke in opposition, everyone's from Pinedale too. So to me, it just shows that strength in number two. And, you know, the fact that you had some individuals who represented key figures within the community, for example, like the president of the HOA not being present too. It's, you know, there's fear, there's fear in what we do, but there's such a value and presence, okay? And my wife, she always gets on my case because I wanna buy her something nice for an anniversary, but she says, hey, I prefer presents over presents, okay? But ultimately, you know, you speak of fear a lot too, but I think when it comes to our children, when it comes to our children, fear is not involved in regards to our children's safety, okay? And the fact that you have these key admin individuals representing Clovis Unified, right? Who we, we entrust every single day. We, we entrust every single day, right? We entrust every single day. I mean, they spend more time with these admin and their staff than we do as parents. And the fact that they're here in support, spending their weekdays, weeknights with this community, it just means a lot to me, too. So, you know, I'm conflicted, but, you know, I'm open to whatever these commissioners are going to make in regards to an emotion. And Commissioner Hardy, I know you want to ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. For Jennifer, if this doesn't get, Jennifer? Yeah? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners Jennifer Reese, deputy city manager.
Thank you. If this project, if my colleague, colleagues find a finding that they think is detrimental to, finding a finding, would this applicant have an opportunity to find another location, or are they done after this?
Technically, their CUP approval at the 1784 Shaw location is, is, it has not been revoked yet.
Okay.
So they could look for another location or keep that.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I have a question for you, Jennifer. Would the applicant have the opportunity to go back to city council and deal with it?
No. City council for the cannabis approval process only deals with appeals of the city manager's decision.
Well, with that being, thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you so much. It's been a long night, and thank you all for being here till 10 o'clock at night. It's amazing. We, we have about five minutes before we have to
So we're gonna go ahead and we'll bring it back to the, yes, any commissioners want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, and I'm not sure how to word it, so I'll need help from Jennifer and the city attorney. I would like to not approve the environmental assessment, and I would like to uphold the appeal on the basis of, I think it's finding C, that I do not believe that, that this is not detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, welfare of the persons residing, working, visiting, or recreating in the surrounding neighborhood, and that it will not result in the creation of a nuisance.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bray. Do we have a second?
Do you have a second?
Let's go ahead and for this one, let's please take vote, one by one, the commissioners. Commissioner Lade.
Based on the verbal testimony, I approve your motion.
Commissioner Diaz.
Yes.
Commissioner Bray.
Yes.
Commissioner Criner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy.
Yes.
And Chair Vang.
Yes.
So motion, how do we state this? That the motion for the appeal has been approved? Is that correct?
Yes, that'll be fine.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Quiet hands, please. Quiet hands. Quiet hands, please.
Hold on, hold on, you all. We have to finish. Hold on, we have to finish. Hold on.
Thank you, everyone. We still have, we're trying to, excuse me.
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on, hold on.
Finally, let us finish, please. Let us finish.
Hold on, everyone. It's, it's 9:57. We're volunteers. So we worked a full day of work, and we need to go home to our wives, husbands, and kids. So if we can, we're gonna continue our meeting. Do we have any reports by the secretary?
I have no report tonight.
All right. It's currently 9:58. Meetings are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.